I just heard councillor Mack say, what do we do if councillor Gardner doesn't show up for the National Anthem? Yeah, he was worried. May I ask councillor Gardner to lead us in the singing of the National Anthem?
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True page with love in all of us common. Quand ton bras s'est porté les cuir, il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est d'une époque des plus brillants exploit. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you councillor Gardner. We acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Mohawk people of Akraasasne. I'd like to remind people that Wednesday is Orange Shirt Day, which is a day for us to remember the painful history around residential schools and to make sure that we learn and understand about that history. I also want to add that we are definitely going through some difficult times as a province, as a country. And people say to me all the time that we are lucky here in Cornwall, and we are. But it's not just luck. Many, many, many people are working hard to make sure that we're doing the best that we can in staying safe, in keeping our families safe. I just want to acknowledge that and thank people for that and just be grateful that we are doing as well as we are. And to ask people to continue, to continue what we're doing, what we're doing and staying connected with each other. People keep learning new rules and keeping up, and we appreciate that. And so it's just a moment of gratitude in the moment of personal reflection that I was thinking about, and I thought I would tell you that out loud. Before we start roll call, I just want to highlight that we have received as a council a gift of a pair, each one of us, from Transitions Plus Cornwall. Susan Toundreau added a card and wants me to remind you that this is about local food, about making sure that we have a thought for planting trees and being resilient in our own backyards. So merci to Transitions Plus. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Bernadette Klemm.
Present.
Councillors Claude McIntosh.
Present.
Eric Bergeron.
Present.
Sid Gardner.
Here.
Dean Hollingsworth.
Present.
Councillors Ebert and D'upel, or, I'm sorry, councillor D'upel sends his regret, madam mayor. Councillor Ebert.
Present.
Glenn Grant.
Present.
Todd Bennett.
Present.
Justin Towndale.
Present.
Annie Lane McDonald.
Present.
So I just want to set out some little comments about Zoom tonight. So we have councillors Bergeron and Towndale on Zoom here. We're going to have a presentation on screen there, and then at the end of that presentation, we'll then put the councillors on the larger screen. So there will be a slight pause while we get that organized and move councillors Bergeron and Towndale to the larger screen. It should be seamless, famous last words, it should be seamless. Any additions, deletions, or amendments?
I have one, madam mayor. The confirming bylaw will change slightly in removing the in-camera minutes. Those minutes were not on the agenda closed, so we will add them at the next meeting.
No other additions, deletions, or amendments. Adoption of the agenda. Moved by councillor Grant and councillor McDonald. Any comments? All in favor? Carried. Any disclosures of interest? Seeing none, we'll go to committee of the whole. Motion to go into committee of the whole. Councillor Gardner, seconded by councillor Ebert. All in favor? Carried. There are two sets of minutes, Tuesday, September 8th, and Monday, September 14th, 2020. One motion should do it. Moved by councillor Bennett, seconded by councillor Grant. Any discussion? All in favor? Carried. Madam Clerk.
Our first presentation this evening is the Housing Revitalisation Study presentation, and we have our manager of Social and Housing Services here, Melissa Morgan, and I believe she will introduce our presenter from Colliers International.
Hello, Ms. Morgan. Good evening, Mayor Klemm and councillors. So this evening's presentation is a culmination of the Housing Revitalisation Study that has been ongoing for the past 10 months with a few hiccups due to our current pandemic, but we persevered and we're here this evening to present that to you. This is an action item as part of our five-year housing plan, and as such, the Social and Housing Services Department hired Colliers International to conduct this study and develop a housing revitalisation plan that will assist us with future planning of affordable and social housing within Cornwall and the United Counties of SDNG. As part of the study, Colliers also enlisted the support of several other consultants. With us this evening are three of the individuals who were part of that committee. To my right is Surya Puliko. He is a manager with Infrastructure Advisory Services of Colliers Project Leaders. Surya worked closely with me in managing the delivery of the assignment and also leads the Colliers team and its subconsultants, Doyle Tech and Republic Urbanism, towards its successful completion. Surya's professional background is architecture, real estate, finance, and development. Surya brought to this project his extensive advisory work, experience evaluating and planning complex housing portfolio revitalisation programmes for municipal housing organisations such as the Ottawa Community Housing and Metro Vancouver Housing Corporation. In the audience to my right, we also have Jeffrey Doyle, who is a partner and manager of research at Doyle Tech Corporation since 1999. He specialises in detailed research and analysis for both public and private sector clients, covering a number of industrial sectors, technologies, programmes, and initiatives all across Canada. Prior to joining Doyle Tech, he managed the research and consulting activities at several different real estate and consulting firms including PMA Brethor Research Associates and the Canadian Research and Consulting Group, and the Royal La Page Commercial Real Estate Advisory Services. And we also have with us Jesse McPhail, who is an urban planner with Republic Urbanism. Originally from St Andrews West, he has a mix of public and private sector planning experience split between Alberta and Ontario, and more specifically, the city of Cornwall and SDNG area.
Is that our St Andrews West?
Yes.
Cool.
He's experienced in the development and implementation of municipal, intermunicipal plans, zoning bylaws, community improvement initiatives, and public engagement strategies. Jesse's role in the project included undertaking a review of applicable planning policy and best practices, conducting analysis of existing housing sites to identify opportunities for regeneration and/or new development, interviewing local municipal stakeholders to identify potential new sites and opportunities, as well as assisting the development of recommendations aimed at improving local planning frameworks and their approach to housing and affordable housing. And with that, I will turn it over to Surya.
Welcome, gentlemen, to Cornwall City Council.
Thank you. Thank you for having us today. So we'll be using a lot of acronyms here, so I thought of putting up a slide upfront to expand those acronyms. I'll be expanding them as I speak. Just for your reference, I've included this slide. So the study area was divided into the city of Cornwall and the individual townships under the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry. This slide shows those areas and also the distribution of units within those areas. As you can see, the Cornwall area has the highest distribution, followed by South Dundas, North Dundas, and North Glengarry. And the smallest of that group is South Glengarry with 26 units. So before I move on, I just wanted to give you the lay of the land. We divided the study into four sections. First, we looked at the existing scenario, which is what we are going through now. We looked at the portfolio, the housing portfolio in the region as is. Then we consulted with the key stakeholders involved in this study. Then we looked at what is possible from a development perspective. We did a development analysis, and then finally we arrived at the revitalisation plan. So this is the first part of that, which is the review of the current scenario. So this slide provides an overview of the distribution across the city of Cornwall and the United Counties of SDNG by operator type, location, and the programme type. So what you see in the bottom axis, where it says LHC, LHC-AH, PNP, and LHC-PNP. LHC stands for Local Housing Corporation. LHC-AH is the Affordable Housing Programme under that. And PNP stands for Private Nonprofit Service Providers. And LHC-PNP refers to the PNP that was assumed by the Local Housing Corporation. So the axis shows the operators, and the grid below that shows the programme under which they are operated. It's a little bit complicated, but this gives you the whole picture as to how it's distributed across the various municipalities, who operates it, and under what programme they're operated. So when it comes to programmes, so the LHC programme has about 1,000-plus units under its operation, followed by the Provincial Reform Programme. And between the Local Housing Corporation and PNP, that's the operator type, the 70% of the units are operated by the Local Housing Corporation, which is the CAHC, Cornwall and Area Housing Corporation. And the PNP's provide the rest, that is, the 30% of the units in the area. When it comes to geographical distribution, 72% of the units are in the Cornwall area, followed by South Dundas and North Dundas, and the rest of the areas have around 3% to 2% of the units. Next slide, please. Sorry, I think I covered the next one. So distribution of, this one, is by units and building types. So the Cornwall area has the widest variety of building types, except it covers all the building types from townhouses, row houses, low-rise, mid-rise, and high-rise, except for one type, which is the walk-up apartment type. The Cornwall area has all types of it. And the most predominant building type across all municipalities is the low-rise type, followed by the townhouses and row houses. This pattern is very similar to what we see in other cities when it comes to social This provides an overview of the income sources of sites under various programmes. So the thing to note here is the presence of market rate units under the Provincial Reform and Section 95 programmes. This shows the situation where we have some leakage of the rent geared to income or the subsidised units. It is because the tenants there do not qualify to be under the, their incomes are higher than required to qualify under the RGI rental rate. The other point to note here is the, all the units requiring ministry subsidy to be operational, to meet their operational expenses. So you can see the green bar in all of the programmes and operators. So this slide shows the distribution of operating expenses across the various programmes, programme type, and the operator type. You can see that the mortgage payments form a significant part of the operating expenses. This is followed by what is called the operating cost, which is the cost required for the day-to-day operations of these facilities. This generally include insurance, repair and maintenance costs, utilities, and management expenses. By management expense, what I mean is the salaries and expenses of the personnel directly involved with the upkeep of the facility, and certain other supplies and administration costs. Next slide, please. So this provides an overview of the operating cost per unit, per year. And as you can see, the LHCs have the highest cost per unit, per year. And this, we were not, we didn't actually go into the details as to why that was the case. Probably, it could be, a variety of reasons could lead to that. One of it could be the fact that the buildings are older, and probably the systems are not that efficient, especially when it comes to, say, utilities and such. The cost could go up. So that could be one reason. Next slide, please. This slide shows the capital expenditure per unit, per year. So how this differs from the previous slide is that operating expense refers to the day-to-day costs of operating the building, whereas this refers to the costs incurred in adding value to the building or extending the life of the building. So this would be costs like roof replacement or adding a, or replacement of the HVAC system, the heating system, et cetera. So as you can see, the AHP buildings, the Affordable Housing Programme, buildings under Affordable Housing Programme, which are relatively new compared to the other assets, don't have a capital expenditure component. This generally kicks in when the building is past that 15, 20-year time period, and these buildings are relatively new. And you can see that older buildings have a significantly higher capital expenditure that's incurred every year. Next slide, please. This shows a distribution of debt commitments by debt type and operated type and location. So you can see almost all the assets have some type of debt funding, except for the LHC, which doesn't have any, which was fully grant-funded. So we looked at this to understand if there are any, there would be any restrictions when it comes to redevelopment of these assets, but our experience has shown that there would, there will not be any. Yeah, next slide, please. So we have now covered the review of the current scenario. The next part of the study was consultations, consultations with key stakeholders. There were three main stakeholder groups. First, the city and county administrators, followed by the private nonprofit service providers, and then the public. So with the county and, city and county administrators, we had an in-person consultation as well as a survey. With the surveys, nonprofit service providers, we had an in-person consultation, and with the public, we had both. We had an in-person consultation as well as a survey sent out. So in the next few slides, we'll just, we'll go through the responses that we received from the public. So our first question was, what was your preferred location? And we got the following answers. It included West Cornwall, Long Sou, Ingleside, Glen Walter, and Martindown. Preferred employment locations, where Ottawa came as a surprise, they're followed by Downtown and West Cornwall, Mountain, and Summertown. And about 42%, which we think is a significant percent, of our respondents were employed full-time. This was followed by retired, about 28%. Over 80% of the respondents mentioned that they had concerns with the quality and access to housing available in the area. And then we asked certain questions regarding the preferences when it came to the housing type and the building type. We saw a great appreciation for single families, detached houses, and also, I mean, the preference was very weak when it came to multifamily, high-rises, or even low-rises. When it came to the question regarding the development preferences, over 37% indicated their preference to have wakened sites redeveloped, and about 47% mentioned they prefer adaptive reuse of existing underutilized sites across the city. Other development preferences indicated were barrier-free spaces and more suitable units, I mean, suitable to their need. Over 40 to 60% of the respondents stated the following, which is as their primary concern, that is, the state of repair, the number of units, suitable units available in the area, the visual quality of sites, safety, and security. The top three features the respondents would like to introduce to new housing development were cited as public transit access, access to grocery stores, and well-maintained units. Top three features for, to be included in existing housing developments were cited as more family spaces, more parks and playground spaces, and community gardens. Over 80% of the respondents did not currently live in any form of affordable housing, and the top three challenges identified in finding good quality affordable housing were cited as wait times, condition of the assets themselves, and the affordability. The last square, which shows the preference of certain types of units, this is quite interesting because this wasn't something we expected to see, especially the bottom two items, that is, three-bed and four-bed. About 30 to 40%, sorry, 30 and 40% of the respondents indicated preference for three-bed and four-bed units, which means that this group is not currently served by us, and they are looking to us to provide them with their needs. Next slide, please. So the next stakeholder group that was interviewed was the private nonprofit service providers. These are the responses received. Their strategic objective, as identified by the service providers, was to provide safe, high-quality, social and affordable housing across the continuum, continuum of need. The ideal ratio to income when it comes to social housing is 30%, but the service providers mentioned that it varies considerably amongst their tenant base. It varied from 15 to 80% of their income. The top three preferences of tenants were social and health services, recreation, and transit access. The top three concerns were wait times, availability of suitable units, and lack of transit access. Top features preferred by tenants were professional services, personal services, health and mental support, gym, indoor pool, transit, and daycare. Some of the key, I will just, I won't be mentioning all of what's mentioned in here because a lot of it aligns with what I discussed earlier, as provided by the public. One of the key takeaways here was the mention of what certain client groups preferred. So the service providers indicated that families preferred to be located close to urban centres, and the seniors would prefered be located close to where they previously lived. And the main users of their services were identified as seniors, families, families mainly single moms, and single non-señores. And one of the key reasons they observed for using their services were lack of employment, lack of high-paying jobs, health issues, and sometimes even loneliness. So we come to the last stakeholder group, that is, the city and county administrators. Again, a lot of what we heard aligned with the public and the last, what this private nonprofit service providers mentioned. A few key items that we observed, I'll just go through them. City identified that their strategic objective is to see housing as a means to ensure sustainable growth in population, education, employment, and economy. And city believes that affordable housing is pertinent to achieving these strategic So city also identified the requirement to bring or encourage private sector in the future development of affordable housing. And the city also identified the need to make adjustments in the regulatory framework to enable or encourage private participation, private developers' participation going forward, because the need is so high, so weighted, that one agency alone will not be able to respond to those needs in time. So there should be more wide, wider participation. So that brings us to the end of the consultation. We also did a numerical or quantitative analysis to understand the needs, and, so we took into consideration five different sources of information. One is population projections. Second is statistical data from the government sources, primarily what we call the LiMat, which is the loan cur measure after tax. Weightless data from the social and housing department. And surveys, I mean, the surveys we gathered from, survey results we got from our consultations. And anecdotal evidence we gathered during our consultations, as well as our interviews with the service providers. So what we learnt was, over a 10-year period, that was the period we were looking at, So what we learned was, over a ten-year period, that was the period we were looking at from twenty twenty-one to twenty thirty-one, there is a need for around seven, the actual number is seven forty-one units, roughly seven hundred fifty. So if we divide that into two five-year terms, from twenty-one, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six, it's about four hundred fifty units, and for the remaining time period, that is, twenty twenty-seven to twenty thirty-one, it would be two ninety-one units. So we took this need and then tried to distribute it along the various demographic groups. So here you can see seniors, non-seniors, single parents, families of weighty sizes. So what you can see is the first three groups, there is high demand, and the demand is growing. And the second two groups, there's, or three groups, there's low demand, two of which is stagnant, and one of which is declining. And the fourth one is very low demand. This is coming out of our numerical analysis, based on the demographic, based on income distributions and such. We looked at the LIMAT population. But this, I've put a star towards that very low demand because I wanted to bring your attention to what we learned from the public consultation, where it showed that there is a higher need for three- and four-bedroom units, which is currently not offered, the type of, which is very, I mean, if you look at the existing portfolio, there aren't many units that can provide those three- and four-bedroom units. And this group probably currently does not qualify under, to fall under the RGI or the Affordable Housing Program, so they have to depend on what is available in the market to meet their needs, that is, the three- and four-bedroom unit types. So this is, this graph shows the relationship between what we have and what we need. So I think we should just concentrate on the blue bar and the yellow bar at the end. The blue bar shows the existing supply, and the yellow bar shows what we need in the next ten years. So you can see, the ones I have circled is where we have a higher need than what we currently have. So North Dundas, South Glengarry, and South Stormont will have a higher need than what our assets, than the number of assets we have, or units we have in those areas. So I think we have come to the end of our second portion of the study, and we get into the third one, which is the development analysis. We look at how we can meet the needs by developing the existing sites, or maybe acquiring new awakened sites, or even expanding existing sites, rebuilding the existing sites, or acquiring awakened sites, and building new buildings on it. So we looked at the existing sites, and we also identified certain sites across the various municipalities which had vacant lots. And this is what we found. And we looked at how many units we could add on these existing sites in addition to what's already there. And also, we looked at those vacant sites we identified, and we looked at, we identified how many units we could build there. So this graph shows that. So units needed is what you see in orange, and the full build-out capacity at these, in these sites, in these municipalities, is what you see in blue. So in most municipalities, you have more, more than enough capacity than you need, except for one, which is North Dundas. And also, this projection here is based on low density. By low density, what I mean is the building type we took into consideration to calculate the number of units. So it was calculated in using two types. Low-density referred to the row house and townhouse-type buildings. And we also calculated it using high-density numbers, which means mid-rise and high-rise unit types. So for North Dundas, for the calculations that you will see in the subsequent slides, we have used the high-density calculation to meet those needs. So the other factor we took into consideration was the possibility of identifying shovel-ready projects. So as I mentioned earlier, we looked at the existing sites, how many more units we could add, either by rebuilding those existing assets, or by adding additional units, expanding those assets. And we also looked at how many of those vacant, how many units we could add in the vacant sites. Some of these sites we could build, like, tomorrow. Some need a certain amount of work, and some need a little more than that. So based on that, we identified what we call shovel readiness, and we gave a three-step rating, that is, yes, possible, no. Yes means it's shovel-ready, we can do it immediately, we can initiate the projects immediately. Possible means will require some amount of work to initiate the project. No, it could be done, but it will take at least a couple of years to initiate the project, go through all the approval process, do some additional work inside to get the site ready So this shows a distribution of shovel-ready projects by municipality and site type. So you can see existing sites and the proposed sites, and you can see the distribution of shovel-ready projects across the various municipalities. So of that, you can see, there's only one site, we can say it was immediately possible to initiate projects. Most of it was a no, which means it'll take at least a couple of years to initiate those projects. But there were enough sites that had the possibility of starting without much hurdles. So we consider those sites, the ones in yellow, for analysis purpose. So this slide, we just wanted to, so before we moved into the revitalization plan, we actually wanted to make a case for, the economic case for investment in affordable housing. So what we have seen is, I mean, there was a lot of evidence when we did our research, which pointed towards a correlation between investment in affordable housing and the ability for a city to sustain economic development on a long term. So what we're saying here is, when we, for a city to have sustained economic growth, you need to be able to nurture and retain talent in that city, in that particular area. That brings in additional investment, and it creates that vicious cycle within that community, which creates more development and additional GDP growth. So, and also, investment in housing itself will help to kickstart many areas of the economy, local economy. So while we were doing that analysis on, or the review on making that economic connection between investment in housing and economic growth, we thought we could broadly classify them, that connection, into a direct connection and indirect connection. So direct connection goes into the monetary benefits, direct benefits that investment in housing brings to the economic growth. There are some numbers I've mentioned here, I think I'll not go through them, because I'll be basically reading them out. The other indirect connection, which is on the next slide, points to the social benefits that affordable investment in affordable housing can bring, which is affordable housing, free SEP disposable income, that the residents can invest in health, education, and even, you know, having nutritious food, or any other extra expenditure cases where, which adds value to the family life and also to the community at large. So, yeah. So this is where we arrive, try to arrive at the strategy for the revitalization plan. So we looked at, as I mentioned earlier, the density, the development capacity, the site characteristics, and the ease at which we could start projects. All these were taken into consideration to understand what is the development potential and how and when we can start those developments. That's what we mean by prioritization. And when we, when we looked at, that was the technical side of arriving at the strategy, and we also looked at what is that, the community needs. We looked at what the clients' needs were, you know, what their composition was, and what their needs, when we translate those needs, the demographic groups and their needs, what do we get? We see more suitable units, more accessible units, faster processing times and proximity to amenities and transit. So based on these criteria, we set, we created about ten, sorry, fifteen criteria with which to rate each property that we were considering. And based on that, we arrived at what works and what doesn't, and we identified properties that we could develop to get this additional seven hundred and forty units in the next ten years. So the other aspect we looked at was, as I mentioned, there are client groups and their needs, and how do we, how do we address them? So we heard that there was an overwhelming need to have multiple uses around the neighborhood. They wanted more amenities, more services available to them. So it pointed to a mixed-use kind of development. And then the other major point we heard most of the time was suitability, units suitable to a wide variety of needs that tenant base has. So that's why we thought probably the answer lies in addressing the missing middle. What we mean by the missing middle is that, if you look at the general availability of housing, it's either the single family, or then you have the multifamily, high-rises, high-density type. The middle, that is, the fourplexes, fiveplexes, low-rises, where in most cases, missing. And that's probably where we can address the missing middle, the suitability. The third was mixed income. So you had, up until now, or in most cases, you have a lot of subsidized units, and then there is the market segment. And then there is a middle that is not really addressed by our social or affordable housing that the government provides. This is the current missing middle. And this is, this group of potential tenants, they are currently dependent on the high-priced market-rate units, so we want to bring them also into the group. So mixed use, missing middle, and the mixed income was the strategy we used to address the units. So next slide shows what shape could they take? You know, we talked about the missing middle. So it starts with the duplex away from the single family, single-family, single-detached, duplex, fourplexes, stacked townhouses, low-rise apartments, and the low-rise courtyard-type apartments. But it's not the full list, it's just, I wanted to just show what is possible in terms of addressing that missing middle. So after all that, those inputs, those analyses, we finally arrived at our revitalization plan. So this, basically, we call it the implementation plan. What do we do with the existing assets and those that we identified for potential development? So as you can see, there are three existing sites which we have identified for rebuild and densification. There are about four sites we have identified, existing sites, we have identified for expansion. And what you see identified as new-built are newly and new awakened sites that we identified from the various municipalities. So the way the prioritization has been done is to ensure that the existing tenants don't go out of the system when the expansion or rebuild happens. So we have looked into how we can sequence these projects. First, we build the expansion units, or the new builds, so that new units are created, and the existing tenants can move into them, and the existing units can be renovated or rebuilt as needed. So you can see how the units are distributed across that five, five, that is, twenty twenty-one to twenty-six, and twenty-seven to twenty thirty-one. How we achieve that seven hundred and forty-one units over that ten-year period. So when we had figured out how we are going to achieve the seven hundred and forty-one units, we also looked into what it might cost over that ten-year period. So overall, it'll cost roughly around two hundred seventy-five million dollars. That is hundred and eighty-two point three in the first five years, and ninety-two point six in the remaining five years. So this is the total development cost estimate, that is, cost of construction, site works, plus consulting fees. So we looked at how to develop, how to, how much it'll cost. The next immediate, next obvious step was for us to understand how these costs would be funded. So we looked at various schemes, and we also took into consideration what we had seen in similar other development proposals. Nevertheless, the most popular funding schemes are those that are provided under the National Housing Strategy. And two main funding programs under that that we often see are the National Housing Co-Investment Fund and the Rental Construction Financing Initiative. I'm not going to the details, it's all there. What we have seen is, I mean, it's very difficult to say at this point as to what would work best, but from my experience, I've seen that the National Housing Co-Investment Fund is the most preferred funding option for municipal agencies, municipal redevelopment projects. And, I mean, one of the things I remember from the analysis we have done previously is that N H C F provides up to twenty years. That is, it provides their first ten-year period for the loan, and it allows refinancing for another additional ten years, which is good. So we've looked at the development strategy, we've looked at the cost, we've looked at the funding mechanisms that we can use. We also looked at how we're going to deliver this project. There are two ways we can do that, do it. It's either piecemeal or on a portfolio basis. By piecemeal, what we mean is one project done at a time, that is, that you initiate a project, finish it, start the next project. We have about fifteen projects in this list, so if we do it one after the other, it'll take sixty years, right? So that's not what we want. We want to do many projects concurrently. But how do we do that? So that's a different approach we take. We call, we have named it, put the portfolio approach. So we have compared the advantages and disadvantages of the piecemeal versus the portfolio approach. And what we have recommended is a combination of both. The advantage with the piecemeal, it's, it gives you time to try and experiment and see what works. So you can use the piecemeal approach to understand how the projects go, and try and refine that. You can use that for one or two projects, and use those lessons learned to roll that out for the remaining twelve or thirteen projects on a portfolio basis. The advantages with the portfolio basis, portfolio approach is that you can procure services as a whole, you can initiate services as a whole, you can initiate multiple projects, you have economies, you can, you can take advantages of economies of scale. The, the disadvantage when it comes to the portfolio approach is that you will need a much larger team, better expertise to, to manage the operations. But overall, to get projects managed and completed successfully in a defined period, portfolio approach would be more beneficial. So, I think we can jump to the risk section. So, we looked at the risk, risks, potential risks involved in, in this development. I mean, the, it's a large-scale development, there are about fifteen sites. So, as I mentioned earlier, the pro-recommended approach is going portfolio, so it, we need to look into what, whether the organization that is, the organization or the team that would be leading this exercise has the right governance model, right team structure to manage that. So, the risk mitigation measure mentioned, what we thought would be, would work is that you can plan in advance, set up those organizational structure, you can even create a different, and something we have seen with other agencies is that when it comes to these high-cost projects, which are highly risky as well, they tend to separate that operation from the main, the main body. They create a separate entity that will manage and fund the project. So, the same approach can be taken here to mitigate those risks. The other aspect is decision-making, so, which is very important. And since we have these more than ten projects happening in a short period, decision-making is key, which if not managed properly, can cause delays and cost overruns. So, again, as mentioned earlier, the portfolio approach needs specific expertise in portfolio management or program management. Before we embark on such projects, we need to ensure that we have the right skill set within our team. If we cannot procure and maintain that team internally, we should look, also look outside to see how we can bring those expertise within, into our team. So, the next two risks are related to political challenges and those related to the funding because funding is related to the political programs. So, and as governments changes, there, there would be changes in those funding programs. So, we need to plan for that, and the, the way to plan for that is to initiate the, the process required to understand what is remaining in those, in those funding buckets. Because the, the, the one that is most popular now are the programs under the NHS, and it has a finite value of about twenty billion over ten-year period. So, we don't know how much of that has been used and how much of that will be made available to us. So, we need to start investigating that, try to put together a team, and see how much of that fund can be secured for, for our project. Again, similar risks related to development costs. Again, this, the, the way to mitigate that would be through effective planning and management, and also looking into what delivery method can be used, depending on whether you choose design bid-built, design-built, or construction management. These uncertainties related to, you know, project initiation, prolongation, and all those things can be managed. So, you've come to the last slide. So, after we formulated the revitalization plan, we also identified what could be done next. That's the next immediate step. What, I think I went through some of this already. First is the management part, which I mentioned earlier. If we are pursuing the portfolio approach, this needs a different kind of expertise and skill set in-house, as opposed to, say, the project management where we manage one project at a time. So, program, in this case, what we're suggesting is initiating multiple project, projects at a time, which means it'll be a program of projects, or maybe a portfolio of programs. So, we need that portfolio program management expertise in our team. So, if we don't have that in-house, we should make efforts to build that team strength. The second item within that is to look at the potential project delivery methods that are out there, what can be locally sourced. So, the conventional method is you, the design bid-built, that is, you design, then you bid, then you tender it, and then you procure a general contractor and get it built. So, that is good, but when we have fifteen projects, it's, it's better to have, procure them as a whole for many number of projects, as many number of projects as you can at, at, at one time. So, there would be some economies of scale and some advantages in when, in containing the costs and having cost uncertainty. Second is about governance, as to how you manage the day-to-day activities of the project decision-making and such. So, it is important that we identify who are the key stakeholders, what their roles will be in the project decision-making, because decision-making is key when it comes to complex projects, and timely decisions lead to timely execution, and reduces the risks of prolongation and cost overruns. Prequalification, as I mentioned earlier, this is a large undertaking, which requires a lot of consultants, a lot of contractors, specialists, and such. So, rather than trying to identify who all are available in the market, and trying to identify them during the procurement process, it's better to start now and do a prequalification so that you understand what is that the market, immediate market can provide to, to, for our project. And once we have identified and selected from a larger pool, a smaller pool that fits with our needs, then that procurement process would be much more easier to manage. Third is funding. I believe I already talked about funding in the previous section. The other is existing projects. So, if there are any other projects that are underway, I mean, I don't think there are any development projects in full swing. At least if there are some projects that were being considered, say, for example, expansion or redevelopment, we should align those projects with the new plan, the revitalization plan, so that we can bring it in the overall plan and make use of the economies of scale when it comes to procuring those services related to, to those projects. Next item was planning framework. So, this is in relation to what the city and county administrators had mentioned about having certain mechanisms built within the regulatory framework, which helps us to encourage the private sector to come in and participate and help towards adding more affordable housing as a market solution. So, that needs to be built into the, the planning and regulatory framework of the city as well as the united counties. So, 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 yeah, I think with that, we have come to the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sure you will take questions.
Oh, yeah, yeah, certainly.
Counsel.
Counsel, Rebecca.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you very much for the presentation and all this work. It's ambitious, but it certainly shows a need that we're all very well aware of, but really puts it into perspective, the dollars behind the, the need we need to address. The one thing that wasn't, I don't think was mentioned, was how our lack of affordable housing is creating a really negative impact on our employment sector. And we have a lot of jobs available, and we are lacking the folks to fill those positions. And so, this is critical for so many parts of our, our progress, resident attraction, whatnot. On that note, I just, I had a question for Ms. Morgan. Can non-S D G and Cornwall residents be on our current waitlist if they're looking to come to the area?
Through you, your worship, yes. As long as you live in Ontario, you can apply to any municipality.
Okay.
To be on their waitlist. Actually, it's not even within the province. We have external people living outside the province who can apply as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I want to challenge a point during, about the, the survey. I'm wondering if we have an idea of how many survey responses were received from the public? Do we have a, a number for that?
I don't have the number. There were several, I'd say hundreds.
Okay.
So, the, the public survey was actually better received than the public consultation. Unfortunately, the public consultation was hosted three days before the majority of COVID shut everything down, so we think that had some impact on our participation of the in-public session.
I think it was hosted the day the schools were shut down, so from a meeting I attended. That morning, that was really well-attended, to that one in the evening, people's minds had changed quite significantly.
Absolutely.
But in the, in some of the survey results, which I'm just looking for, slide seventeen says eighty percent did not currently live in any form of affordable housing. Was a question asked about how many of the survey responses were either on a waitlist or were seeking affordable housing?
On the waitlist, so, it was around the same number that we arrived at as the potential need for social housing, that is, close to seven hundred and forty was the amount, the number that was on the waitlist currently.
Right. So, I'm, I'm wondering, so eighty percent of the survey responses were not in social housing. I'm wondering how many of those eighty percent, what is the percentage, who answered the survey who were either on a waitlist or seeking affordable housing? Is that, is that something that was asked?
We didn't ask that question, but my, I think the respondents are not, were not, have not applied for social housing.
Okay. So, I guess my concern with some of the survey responses, and this is anything really in any kind of surveying, I feel that many of the survey responses from the public came from folks like myself that work in the nonprofit sector, or that work in the service sector, and the survey is shared around within our network, and I certainly answered it, and a lot of people in my world likely answered it. But unfortunately, I'm, I'm assuming that majority of the responses were not from people either in housing, which we can see that, or seeking, or on a waitlist. So, not necessarily asking the right people the needs. And so, this then goes to show, the last little box on slide seventeen, where we all think, when we, when we answered the survey, that three and four bedrooms were the most needed. But when you ask someone, who do you think is the most needy? You think, well, maybe families, families are, right? So, we assume the, the three and the four bedrooms are the most needed. But then if you look on slide twenty-three, and what the reality actually is, is that single non-seniors, seniors, or, or small households are really the most in need. So, I would hope that's kept into consideration when the plan is, is eventually rolled out and, and that we don't decide to just build a bunch of three, four-bedroom units because some folks said it in a survey, but we use more of the, the data from our Social and Housing Services Department that really shows that the need is more so for smaller households. Single non-seniors are struggling, in, in my opinion, likely the, the most in our community. It is the highest number, they are the highest demographic on our waitlist as far as I am aware, right? So, anyways, so just making that point, or if there is an opportunity at some point to survey those actually living in housing, or survey those on the waitlist, if they have an email, if we can reach out to them, and ask them sort of the same questions and see how, how different the responses would be, because I think they would be significantly different. I think we, as agencies and municipalities, and I've done it myself, we have a hard time really engaging the people that the survey is going to impact the most. And reaching out to people with lived experience really makes a massive impact in the results. But I, I know a lot of work was gone, has gone into that. I was glad to participate in the in-person session. A lot of great questions, a lot of great work ahead of us. Looking forward to next steps and supporting some great programs, as the need is obviously great and will continue to rise.
Other comments or questions? Just looking at counsel for now. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think it's fair to say more comments than questions. You've given us a tremendous amount of information here, and when I think of seven hundred and forty-one units, in the amount of time I've been on council and watching council, that's a number that, I don't know when we'd ever, how far back we'd have to look to match that. So, this is a very ambitious goal, but it's, it reflects the needs of our community. So, it's really useful for us to have this information, and the documentation is so good. So, I think you're proposing that we should actually establish a portfolio, like a, a system maybe, almost like a department. If ever we lucked onto a system of funding from upper levels of government to be able to implement this, then at that point, you think that our current administration, maybe we would be too burdened with what we're doing right now to be able to handle this plan? And I think you're suggesting we actually devise another system, like have somebody actually in charge of the whole project, of the seven hundred and forty-one units, so that it won't, the, the vision won't get lost in maybe just one project at a time sort of thing.
Yes.
Right about that?
Yeah. So, what I was referring to was seven hundred and forty-one units. We have identified about fifteen projects here through, through which you can add, add to existing, or rebuild existing, or build new units. And this happens over a ten-year period, right? And we could either do one project at a time, but roughly it takes about four years from planning to, you know, handing over the key. That's four-year is the time period for, from start to end for a project, that's a lot of time. So, if we do one project at a time, fifteen projects times four, four years, it's about sixty years, right? So, that's not what we want. We want that timeframe compressed. And how do we do that? We do, we do that by running projects concurrently, right? And that needs a lot of planning, upfront planning, before we actually put the shovel on the ground. So, rather than seeing projects one by one and procuring them individually, we procure, see them as a whole, as a whole portfolio. And that's why I mentioned the portfolio approach. And when we procure things as a whole, there will be like that economies of scale that we can utilize, probably even bargain contractors and consultants to reduce the cost. And we, we get a, probably a better deal, but that comes with its own advantages and disadvantages. That's, that's what I was referring to.
Okay. Well, I, I think obviously the weak points in the plan are points three and four in terms of identified risk, and that is that question of funding. But I appreciate the fact that what you've given us as far as treatment for those risks is to simply keep the lines of communication open, and so it's not as discouraging as it could be. You show us a, a way forward, that if we continue to aggressively look for funding and constantly deluge upper levels of government with proof of our need, that there's some encouragement there, if we're dodged it enough in our insistence, so.
I was, I made that point in, based on my experience of dealing with another large nonprofit which operates about five thousand units. And their revitalization plan was around three-point-three billion dollars. And they've initiated that process, they're going, they're not initiating the whole project, they're go, taking it, they've divided that into three parts, depending on what they can do immediately. And they've made their application, and they've received close to one-third of their, I mean, there, there is commitment from the government after many years of, you know. one-third of their, I mean, there, there is commitment from their government after many years of, you know.
Where is this?
This is, I don't know, I'm not sure if I can divulge that information at this point. Sorry. I just wanted to use that example to explain.
Thank you.
Counselor Bergeron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My, I think Counselor McDonald was leading down the same type of question that I have, you know, this is a, a good presentation. This is an issue that comes up at election time a lot and is one that is really complicated. There's, there's a lot going on here. So this presentation, the last slide, has next steps for us as a council. And I'm curious as to what is the actual next step for us? Today, we're just approving or we're, we're accepting this as a, a presentation. What would we as a council be asked to do next to move this forward?
Mr. Pulicow?
Sorry. Yeah. I think I, I'll look at again my previous experience and say funding would be the first step. We have an idea now as to, I mean, order of magnitude, size of the investment required. At least for the two horizons that we talked about, that's the first five-year period and the second five-year period. So the first five-year period, we had about 180 million, let's say, rounded up to, say, 200 million. Let's focus on that. And at the same time, then look at the other points that we have identified here, that is management, governance, pre-qualification, et cetera. But without funding, we cannot do anything. So based on the information that we have or for that five and, the two five-year periods, let's make all our efforts to get commitment from the higher levels of government, that we can have that amount committed to us for that initial five-year period.
Any follow-up, Counselor Bergeron?
Well, yes. I mean, follow-up would be, I'd like to see this at budget time. I'd like this to be something we, we get to vote on. I think the Cornwall Area Housing Board would have a lot of say here in terms of, of how this moves forward. So I would be curious as to that process, so that it doesn't get kind of convoluted. There, there is a lot going on here. So I will, I'm glad to accept this report and the answer was sufficient. Thank you.
Any response to that, Ms. Morgan? Just a three worship, just a follow-up. The final report will come to council at the next council meeting, which will have other recommendations as well. I think part of those recommendations will include tasks force or groups to, of representatives of city and county departments to determine how to move forward and what recommendations to bring to council at the appropriate times, based on funding opportunities as well.
Thank you. I think that's exactly where Counselor Bergeron was going and Counselor McDonald, like what, what is the single most important thing that we have to do next? And all of those things, we want to be able to talk about and debate around the council table. Any other comments from councillors? Mr. Doyle was seeking my attention. There is a free mic there. Mr. Doyle, if you want to come forward.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the, the comments that you had about the waitlist data. We did use the waitlist data extensively when we built the social needs assessment. And I do agree totally with what you're saying. If you ask a different audience, you're going to get a different answer. There's, the problem with our survey is we did two surveys, one to the general public and one to social and affordable housing, the social and affordable housing market, and the answers are different. And to just, but with respect to interviewing the, the waitlist people, we spent an hour and a half with every service provider in Cornwall and SDNG with the, the facility managers, usually on their day off. But anyways, from that, they're sort of a proxy for, for the waitlist data because at each one of the meetings, they would have their waitlist data with them. One of the things that would come out is that what's happening in Cornwall is not what's happening in SDNG. And what's happening in SDNG is not what's happening in Cornwall. And for instance, in, in Cornwall, a one-bedroom, we've been told several times that trying to get a one-bedroom social housing unit in the city of Cornwall is like winning the lottery. Well, there's actually one-bedroom units vacant outside of Cornwall. So it, and same thing in, in, in Cornwall, there's three and four-bedroom units which are sitting on near Brookdale Avenue that are vacant. But yet there's a real need for one and two bedrooms. The other thing too is there's a certain law about, you know, certain regulations about, like every person has to have a separate bedroom. So even though we're talking about two bedrooms, it's, it, you know, if there's two people, that's two bedrooms, right? So but the fact is, is that, yeah, that from a social housing perspective, the one and two bedrooms are in dire, dire, dire demand. And the other thing too is, quite frankly, one of the reasons why the, the housing numbers are, the 741 is not higher is because social housing is a spectrum. At any point in time, there's people coming off of it and going on to it. But as we found out, there's also some people who are on it long-term. And the people who tend to be on it long-term are the seniors. And what's happening is they're falling off that list. And they're falling off because they're passing away or they're going to long-term care. One of the things that I thought from doing the research is that the demand for long-term care facilities in SDNG and Cornwall is going to be huge going forward in the next 10 years. It's going to make that 741 look real small. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Any other comments from council?
Housing seriously looks like the single biggest issue we're going to be dealing with going forward. So I, it, it was a long presentation. We do appreciate all of the work. We are alarmed at that $182 million number, but we have to keep moving forward. And we look forward to the follow-up with Ms. Morgan with some concrete next steps. Mr. Pulicow, thank you for your, your presentation.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to receive the report? Counselor McDonald and Counselor Bennett, all in favor? So for the television audience, there's cleaning of mics with disinfectant and there's mask wearing. Madam Clerk, are we ready to proceed?
So we have two familiar faces here. Dr. Hickey and Dr. Riddle from the River Institute. We're very happy to see you here. It feels almost normal to see you here. It's not normal all the time outside, but it, in here, seeing you here, it's, it's good. So we welcome you to Cornwall City Council and we look forward to hearing what you have to tell us about the St. Lawrence River Institute. Yes, you do.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Clemm, and, and good evening, members of council and staff that are present. It's certainly a pleasure to have the opportunity to present on behalf of the River Institute and, and this different surroundings. I was thinking, and during that moment of reflection that you have, how many years have I been giving this presentation and it's, or versions of this presentation to council? Our annual presentation, it's well over 20. So it's, and this is certainly a little bit different than normal. But a, a great opportunity for us. So thank you very much. We had expected to give our presentation in a slightly different format in terms of a letter that we were going to ask the representative of, of council to, on the River Institute Board, Counselor Bennett to, to read out. But then we got this last-minute invitation to, to join in. So what we're going to do is, is I'm going to get the opportunity to read that report, and you have it here. And then we, we took the opportunity to add a few slides to present and do a little bit of a different, deeper dive on one of our programs, just to highlight one of our programs that I think is quite interesting and exciting. So, so we're happy to submit this report and, and I would draw your attention to the 2019 annual report that we, we submitted to council. It's, you have a digital copy of this report. It was 2019, was our 25th year. And we celebrated the 25th year of our time here in Cornwall and, and the creation of the institute 25 years ago in 2019. So there's quite a lot of that information in the report. What I'm going to read out to you is a little more of a, more recent update of, of how things have been going in this marvelous 2020. So we look forward to, we hopefully you, you know, look through the annual report and reflect with pride, considerable pride on beh, on behalf of the institute, of, behalf of the, the city in terms of its role in making the institute happen. And we're grateful to everyone who has joined our journal, journey over the past 25 years. And I particularly note those members who have represented city on our board of directors, present and, and past members who've all made valuable contributions. And I also point out that members of, of staff have, have contributed particularly on our foundation board with representing the city on our River Institute Foundation. And Maureen Adams is currently representing the city in that, in that regard. So of course, 2020 has had, presented numerous challenges as, as to everyone. And we're, actually can report that we're adapting quite well in terms of making adjustments and seizing opportunities along the way. And there's a number of examples that I'll, I'll speak about. And one of which, right off the top, it's about our education team. And of course, one of the biggest impacts, as we heard earlier, is, is, you know, schools closing down and, and the college, which you know that the River Institute being located on the campus of St. Lawrence College. And that partnership is very important, but also the college having been impacted. So that had a big impact on what we could do. Normally, our spring programs, our river, our water festivals, all of those things had to be, take on a new shape. And one of them was a program called Outside In that was benefited, that was developed to benefit students in our local community and to reach out to students in more remote areas. And, and Dr. Hickey is going to speak to that in a little bit, a little bit more detail. But we were able to, this summer, carry out scientist, junior scientist camps for kids. And we were delivered outside, entirely outside, rain or shine, and, and on the river with personal protective equipment and social distancing in place. And we found out the kids were pretty good at it, better than you might have expected. We've also carried out a research and monitoring programs with our full staff and with interns and summer students, opportunities that we continue to provide. Looking for those opportunities. And, you know, the government was willing. They was willing, they were providing opportunities for students. And what they needed was a partner, and we provided that partner. So we had as many students and interns working with us this summer as we usually do in each of our summers. Revised and working from home part of the time, getting pretty spun up much faster than I, I did on MS Teams and Zoom and all of these technologies. Of course, they just know that off by heart and they just go with it. So it was, it was great. As well, we've been busy, as I mentioned, working with our partner, St. Lawrence College, and supervising our laboratories for the, the college environmental technician program and the nursing students, all of which, of course, in the envelope with COVID adaptations and, which is, you know, complicated. And, and so we have been working with them and, and providing a pool of talent in our partnership with St. Lawrence College in order to make these, this new educational environment happen. Another project that I've spoken about more on the research side, that I, I think I sort of, two and a half, maybe three years ago, I kind of made it official. And so we were like held to it was something called the River Report, which was the, which is a health check on the St. Lawrence River, taking the pulse of the St. Lawrence River through this great project called The Great River Report. And we found this amazing woman, Dr. Lee Magahi, who happened to join our community about that time. And she introduced ourselves, herself, and I said, have I got a project for you? It's official. I told council, I was, we were going to do this. So she has, first thing she did was reached out to the Mohawk community and made sure that we had firm and fast, fast partners in order to, to ensure that we can work together on creating, you know, carrying out a responsibility to the river. And, and so the whole rapport is being developed and inspired through their Thanksgiving prayer concept. And I am looking forward to the day we're getting there. COVID has knocked us, you know, behind a little bit. So I was hoping for 2020. It's going to look like it's going to slip into 2021, but we're making great progress. And you should see the material that's getting produced with this. I am looking forward. And we have some great talented people that are actually going to make this look fantastic. So I'm looking forward to being able to get, have Dr. Magahi and her team present to council that report on the health of the river. It's going to be amazing. No pressure, of course, no pressure. And joining Dr. Magahi is, in this past months, has been a new scientist, Dr. Maryanne Perroll. She's joined our team in, in, in February, I believe it was. It's been a long time ago, February, doesn't it? And, and she has joined, joined us and has extensive knowledge on aquatic insects, plants, and wetlands. So she is making a great contribution, comes from, it comes from the University of Ottawa, is, but her background is Northern Ontario and is just a, a nice fit for Cornwall and area. She's really enjoying herself. And she is contributing as well to our teaching with the college. In fact, she got her feet wet this summer by help, by running a recovery course that the St. Lawrence College was very involved in, in making sure the students who were affected by COVID had an opportunity to do recovery courses so they could complete their, their diplomas. And she did one that was very, very important for the, for four students to complete their, their diploma. So she got right in there. We also have an amazing education coordinator, Christina Charette, who is, manages our school programs and all of our education programs and keeps those contacts. But at the same time, she's doing her PhD at the University of Montreal on something called, University of Quebec at Montreal, I should say. She would get me for that if I didn't correct myself. On the round goby, if you're on the river and you're fishing on the river, you know about these invasive, very pesky fish who like to eat all the other, take over all the space of all the other little small fishes out there. And there's some goods and some bad because some of the, if you're a bass fisherman, you like them. I think the last time we were here, Scott Lecky was here at the same time, and he had brought all of those fishermen. And they came to, to the St. Lawrence and the Cornwall area, partly because of the round goby, because the bass reading them and doing so well. But at the same time, they're pushing other fish out. So this is always just give and, give and take a little bit with this round goby. But she's looking into its whole life cycle and its effect on the, on the, on the, on the, on the other fish and also on the cycling of contaminants into the program, into the food chain. And she's actually, her work is, has so impactful that she was featured recently on a, a really quite popular Quebec TV program called La Semaine Verte to, to discuss her research and describe that. So, so she's making certainly inroads there. We have our River Labs group, which is the component, the department at the institute that works on a more commercial environmental technologies, sustainable technologies, and, and often looking at those partnerships. And they're working in many And they're working in many different sectors, but they seem to continue to find ways to work with the brewery sector. And now they're working with on organic, how to treat the organic waste that comes from a local cannabis growers. So they're being quite active in these very fast changing technologies in these fast growing areas. And they're also quite involved with UAV or drone services using and doing pilot training for for people who want to be applying drone technologies and environmental environmental surveys, mapping, and also infrared technologies and spatial analytics. So all of these can be done with drones. It's the amazing technology that we have some real good expertise here. So I should also point out that our educating educators are working with the city and they're engineering and environmental services department on to raise awareness on water use and water conservation. And that's sort of a in progress project right now and using their expertise on outreach and putting together some quality documentation and social media campaign approaches to to raise that awareness. And as well, our community outreach programs have gone, we're gone virtual with those. And our annual symposium, which we normally has have in June was had to be postponed, but we're going to be having it in October, 28, 29 as a virtual event. And we already got a full lineup and with some great speakers and as well. And that can be all found and the details on our website at www dot www dot river institute dot C A. And as well, we have our speaker series that we've been doing throughout the past number of months. And that's another opportunity for people to learn about environmental events and environmental issues and what's happening in the river. So so please find that website and and find out what's going on at the River Institute. What I'm going to do is I'm going to scroll. I haven't been just been reading. I've been scrolling through. What I'm going to do is pass it over to Dr. Hickey, who's going to talk about a little bit more about the Outside In program and what they've got planned for that.
So as as Dr. Idol already described, the River Institute is adapting quite well. And one of the reasons, a lot of the science we do can be done in a lab by ourselves in small groups. But one of the real big challenges was what to do with our education program. So because we can no longer be doing face to face activities with kids, we've developed an online presence. We've used the branding Outside In. We want to bring it outside into the classrooms because we can't get out into the outside with the kids. And but what we do best in our education is we provide real opportunities, face to face interactions and mentoring between kids and our scientists. So all of our educators are not just educators. They're also working scientists and technicians. So the challenge was, you know, how to how to maintain the contact with real scientists and how to really mentor these young kids the way we did in the old days. As you can see from this image, this is a pre-COVID shot. Next. So we've got lots of cool stuff online, and these graphics are due to the creativity of my awesome teammates, Stephanie Guerno, Lexi Harquell, and Christina Charette, who Jeff already mentioned. No thanks to me that the graphics looked this good. And so we've got activities for all ages. And one of the real advantages of this approach is school classes can join in and participate in these activities. But anybody who has access to the internet can do them as well. It doesn't have to be a school activity. But we really wanted to maintain that connection between scientists and kids. So the other thing we did is we've managed to deliver programs over over the internet, over computer where I can go out sampling in the morning. Normally, I'd bring the students with me, but I or one of my coworkers can go out, we can do the samplings, we can examine specimens, we can connect the microscopes up to teams so that students in the classroom can be seeing what I'm looking at. They can participate in identifying things that we catch in the water. We can maintain, we can have real time question and answers. And so as much as possible, we've tried to maintain that real connection to our scientists. And going forward, hopefully someday, we'll be able to have students back to the River Institute. And so going forward, what we want to do is get back to what we do best, the real interactions with scientists in our labs and on our boat and in the field, but also use our online activities that we've developed to expand our reach so that students anywhere in in the province, anywhere in Canada, really, or the world who want to participate can book an online version of one of our programs. So we've been busy. We've survived, we've adapted, and we're not sure what the next school year is going to bring. But I know I have a creative team that's going to respond to whatever COVID has to throw at us. So thanks for inviting us. Thanks for your time. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
And Jeff is going to
Finish up, Brian, and just say to thank you to all the Brian kind of hit on that is it's really the continuing commitment by sponsors and donors. And obviously, those people that are supporting the institute has managed to, you know, just being flexible and saying, yeah, okay, we can't do it now, but we're really interested in some alternative delivery. And that's been really important. And again, just if you do get a chance, go on to the website and take a look at our annual report, which we celebrated at 25 years. So just with that, we'll stop it there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You started your comments, Jeff, by thanking the city for its support. Well, I want to send that right back to you. We do very well with the reflected glory that comes from the great press you get and all the awards you get on the national stage, the international stage. We do very well by supporting you. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. That's quite heartwarming to hear.
Yeah, well, it's wonderful. So but I do have a couple of questions. One is with reference to the RAP program. You do mention there that the aim, of course, is to take the areas of concern and to move them from impaired to non impaired. And I think there's actually been some progress with the sediment strategy. And now, but what's the timeline? We just had a housing presentation. As you know, we could be looking at many, many years before that comes to fruition of the grand plan there. What about moving the areas of concern to non impaired? Is there any sort of timeline you can reasonably put on that?
I mean, I think that's what we've found is every time we put a timeline line on it, other people have other ideas. And of course, environmental recovery is slower than you'd like it to be, right? But I mean, the real and so, I mean, if you ask, there's just been a new five year Canadian, Canada, Ontario agreement, which is the agreement for protecting the Great Lakes. So it's got a five year timeline. And they've got some very significant expectations to move the the area of concern to delisted status within that five year timeframe. But it's in some ways, it may be aspirational. I've been working on that remedial action plan since I joined the institute some 25 years ago, and it was supposed to be done in five years. I think it's just it is just a learning process that this is environment recovery is slower than, you know, everyone would hope it to be. I think the biggest area where we're actually making progress is real true engagement with the Mohawks of Aquasasne right now.
Wonderful.
And and there was a on the on the handout that we have, you have a slide showing Abraham Francis, who is really central to that, a very good communicator, who has is really committing himself to moving his community forward. And I think there's been a change in the way that the governments also communicate and engage with those communities and to the positive. So all of that is working towards. And I think that's the where the real development has to happen is ensuring that there's true engagement in addressing the concerns that the Mohawks of Aquasasne have in order to get to a point where they would agree to delist. And that's the big hump.
Yep. So you inadvertently help us accomplish our reconciliation goals too, in terms of the truth and reconciliation process.
Well, you put your you put your finger on a big issue, right? It's because environmental concerns in many ways are at the heart of some of the some of those items, right? And so when you look at the history of this area and the creation of the power dam, which was considered to be progress, but it wasn't progress. So some of this reconciliation, you know, we think about, you know, the schools and that sort of thing. However, a lot of the idea not having a say in their own environmental was a big issue. So there's layers there that have to be worked through. And there are a new generation of people at Aquasasne like Abraham that are trying to move that forward.
Yeah. And I think there was actually loss of land involved there, too. So I do have one more question, and it's for Dr. Hickey. There's a reference somewhere in this report to mercury and bats and somebody doing a study on it. What is this with mercury and bats? What's happening?
Yes. So Bailey Bedard is the student working with on this project. And she's a great story because she came to the River Institute as a summer student and in her final year of university and learnt all this stuff, but really had no idea how all this classroom learning connected to what science in the real world is. She worked for us that in inspired her to do a master's degree. And she's looking at mercury and bats. And for reasons nobody understands, bats have higher mercury levels in their bodies than almost any animal. And if you look at where they are in the food web, you would expect them to have very low mercury levels. In fact, when I first brought up the idea of mercury and bats, I was told by all my toxicology colleagues that don't bother their bats, they eat insects, they'll hardly have any mercury. And I ignored them. And much to everybody's surprise, they're just loaded with mercury. And so we're still trying to figure out why. We still don't know why. And she's looking at how bats actually manage to live with so much mercury. So she's looking, she's a molecular biologist, and she's looking at how genes get turned on that produce proteins that help bats neutralize the effects of the mercury. So I'm doing the ecology side. She's learning to be a molecular biologist and doing that side. We're trying to find out where all this mercury comes from, why they're so contaminated, and furthermore, how they manage to deal with it. Because the mercury is having no observable negative effects on these bats.
And just one follow up to that. Is this a phenomenon bats across the country? Or is it particular to our region?
It's it's across the country. So one of the one of our recent studies compared atmospheric deposition mercury levels, so in snow and rain and in places where it's highest in rain and snow, bats are most contaminated. So which means the east and west coasts are most heavily contaminated. Ontario, Quebec's kind of in the middle, prairies are low. But we still don't know why it's so high.
Well, thank you. Counselor Gardner?
My interest in you talked about young children. How are you keeping the interest of the young people in science when this COVID-19 is just disrupting everything?
Well, it's
Just have you lost a lot of kids' interest over this? Or are you continuing to keep them involved?
Well, we're still so one of the things I didn't mention, so before COVID disrupted the school year, we had 19 more programs booked with schools. And we switched to this online stuff. So we lost a couple of weeks as the schools decided what was going on, a couple of weeks as we got our stuff together. And then we still made up 16 of those 19 canceled programs. So I think that's a sign that we are maintaining the interest. Probably the classrooms weren't quite as full because it was kind of an optional end of the school year. So we might have had 10 instead of 20 or 30. But we did lots of programs despite the scariness of COVID. Nobody who had booked summer camp, junior scientist camp spots canceled out of fear of COVID. They all wanted to go ahead with it. We explained the risks. We explained our mitigation plans. And they said, yeah, we're good with that. It's no scarier than going to the store and buying groceries, they said. So so we may lose a few, but but I really don't think so. And, you know, COVID's an opportunity to talk about why science is important. You know, some people are speculating that one of the reasons why pandemics and other disease outbreaks are so more frequent is because of climate change, because of encroachment on habitat of wild species. And so really, COVID is an opportunity to explain why this science is so important. And, you know, maybe some of this wouldn't be happening if we had have listened to some scientists a little bit sooner. So I think it's an opportunity as well as a challenge.
Thank you to Dr. Hickey and Jeff. It's always a pleasure to hear what what your River Institute is doing for us. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from council? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I can tell you both that nobody's happier that you're here tonight than I am, because while I could have read this report, I would have had to run out of the room before the question started. So thanks for being here. We've had a couple of Zoom board meetings through all this COVID. And I've always constantly amazed what you've been able to accomplish with this COVID-19 over or hanging overheads all the time. So the fact that we're still able to study invasive species and learn and understand how they're affecting our river is something that, you know, I'm glad there's no break in. It changes too quickly to just let it go away for a few months. The River Report, again, something you had mentioned, constantly checking the health of the river. That's something that we can't put off for a year because of COVID-19. It's something we need to know and understand so that we can do something about it. Also, what I really, really have enjoyed seeing continue is the engagement you have with our youth. You know, not every kid wants to be NHLer. Some of them want to save the world. So science is the way to do it. And that they're so involved still and what you're able to do over the summer with these kids was remarkable. And, you know, it's it's a great organization. I'm kind of I'm proud. I'm a small part of it.
Well, thank you very much, Counselor Bennett. And you know, it's interesting, it's such a two way, such a strong partnership we have with the city. And, you know, and sometimes all our staff really needs is a little bit of inspiration and a little bit of, you know, attaboy and the board and yourself are pretty good at that. And we thank you for that encouragement and and for the involvement on our board over the, you know, the past while. It's been lots of challenges to everyone's time. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Counselor Mack?
Thank you. 25 years, you've seen it all. 25 years ago, we were told, don't eat the fish. Looking at it over the last 25 years, the health of the river, what would you put it at? It's great improvement, a scale of 1 to 10, 5 or 6? I'm glad you brought up the fact of the power dam. That has changed the pattern of the river and had a great effect on the river. But anyway, when it comes to the health of the river, what's happened in the last 25 years?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of that's the story of the River Report that we're trying to package together because it really will be about stories. And so, you know, we have seen, I mean, in a nutshell, I think what we're going to hear, because it's not me putting that together, it's Dr. Lee Magahi and her team. And of course, I might have a thing to say as Brian and others. But I think what we're going to see is that we've seen improvements in areas like water quality. We've seen improvements in some of the contaminants. We know they're declining slowly, but they're declining. And we see that the fish are improving, right? And so and where we couldn't eat the fish maybe 25 years ago, in particular, some places, there's now, you know, it's okay, you can eat some fish. You have to be careful with the larger fish. So keep to the smaller fish and and be aware of the fish eating, you know, with the guides that the ministry puts out and make sure you're aware of what your your limits are. But, you know, at the same time, there have been fresh insults over that 25 years. And we talked about this round goby, we talked about zebra mussels. And then there's other species that are out there that that, you know, with warming and climate change are making it finding it more interesting to be in the St. Lawrence River. So so what we're trying to do is tell those stories and really so it's so complex. You know, we heard the housing situation, it's complex, but you want to find But you want to find complex, go to the river and find all of these things are happening, as someone said, in constant, in constant motion. So I think our goal is to be able to provide a snapshot of the health of the river. I think it will say that there have been some improvements, but these are areas where we have to be really careful, especially habitat loss is something that we're always concerned about, wetland loss, things like that, where there's this continuous pressure to, you know, just take over a little bit, you know, it's that thin edge of the wedge. So that's an area that we always are going to be concerned about. That's the best answer I can give you right now.
Well, it's a tremendous asset. I think it's underappreciated sometimes by the people who live here. They don't realize what a great river is, what's third largest in Canada. And I lived in Southern Ontario for a while, and before I arrived there, I was looking for the Thames River. Of course, that was just a creek compared to what we've got here. Friends who come from Southern Ontario, I always take them out, they can't believe it. They go, what's this? And I go, the St. Lawrence River.
It truly is amazing. And I always remembered the comment of an Australian professor who came from the Gold Coast, and he was in our boardroom at the River Institute. And he, and we can see the river from where we are. And he said, I don't know if anyone knows that there's more water passing, passing across or past the windows right now than all the rivers in Australia combined. And that was something that really stuck with me, and saying, yes, we're very fortunate.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just one quick question. Is the water getting, is the river getting warmer? And is it something that is good or bad, if it is? So two questions, I guess.
Yes, I mean, and that's a great question, obviously, because of the concern. So, and it turns out it's very topical because we're, this week, we've been meeting with a statistician to do the analysis. I tried to open one of the files, it was something like 25,000 data points. So there's some good, there's some good data on that to look at the trends. The, you know, the prediction would be that we're seeing warmer, but we might not be seeing it in the middle of the river. And do we have the data in, on the sides, you know, where, in the bays, where that could make a difference? And so what it's going to do is if the feeling that if it is getting warmer, what it's going to do is going to have impacts on the types of species that do well in those warmer temperatures. So you can see fish changing perhaps from cooler species to warmer species. Things, these are things. There is a graduate student at Queen's University who has our dataset called the Finns Project. We have over 110,000 data records in that dataset, and he's doing that analysis. So it's, hopefully, I'll be able to answer that question with more definitively the next time that we get together.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Okay, kind of follow-up then. Is that like a natural phenomenon? Like, if you were to study the history of rivers or whatever, is that like something that happens anyway? Or is that something we're doing? We talk about global warming and that kind of thing. Like, are we making a mess of it? Or is it just something that is and like some species die off because environment changes? Like, I guess my question is, is this a natural phenomenon? Or is it something that, on a grand scheme, we have to be cognizant of?
I would say 100% no, it's not a natural thing. If you want a succinct answer?
Any other comments from council?
The annual report looks fantastic. It really brings us into the work, the good work that you do and the connections that you have with young people and with community. Dr. Hickey, thank you for being so direct about science and about, you know, having this pandemic as an opportunity to know more, to research more. Dr. Riedel, thank you for being with this institute from the very beginning and for continuing to do this work with such devotion. It's clear that that's what this is about for you. I am going to echo what Counselor McDonald said about your work and Dr. McGahy's work with Aquasasney. That is pure inspiration for us as a region and will propel us forward, I'm sure. So thank you for being here. Thank you, merci.
Madam Clerk, do we make a motion to receive the report? Moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Bennett. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. So we will take five minutes at this point to adjust Zoom and make sure that the councillors are now on to the presentation screen. Yes. That means people can go to the washroom. Counselors Bergeron and Counselor Towndell? Can they, you can't hear us? Counselor Bergeron, you're muted? Can you hear us now?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Against? Can you hear us, councillors?
We do not know what vote this is.
Yeah, we can hear you, but we're not clear on what the vote is.
Okay. So it was the consent items? Did you hear the consent items being read out?
Negative.
So none of the consent items were removed? All of them are there as consent items? Proclamation, Community Health and Wellbeing, Proclamation Fire Prevention Week, and the August C-Peg, 10th Street East, CN Raillands. So we're voting on a motion to approve those. All in favor? Carried.
My apologies, Madam Mayor, for that technical error.
It's okay. Moving on to unfinished business items. The first report is the Electoral System Review and the action recommended that council provide administration with direction. Counselor Towndell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this point, if you're entertaining motions, I'd like to put one forward.
I am. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to put forward a motion that we reduce the size of council for the 2022 election to eight council seats.
So seconded by? Is there a seconder? Counselor Bennett? Discussion. Counselor Towndell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank administration for this report, I think, and for carrying out the public consultation. This report had a good history on the ward system. I think this finally cumulates in what actually happened and gives us the full history of the ward system in Cornwall and why it was removed. I think prior to this, it was still a little unclear, at least it was for me. You know, I read the comments like yourself, Madam Mayor, and I found it interesting. There was one comment that said, oh, you know, this was addressed 40 years ago. We should, you know, go on the basis of that. Well, things change. 40 years ago was a long time. So to me, that's not really a relevant argument. Looking at it, and I know I'm talking about wards a little bit here, but I'll get to the other part of the discussion quickly. I found it interesting, you know, it was a very simple majority in favor of wards just from this consultation. Makes me think of the 1995 Quebec referendum. The numbers are almost identical, just the other way. I think that it proves that there is an appetite for at least discussion on the issue, but it wasn't a clear majority, in my opinion. But there does seem to be, well, the population seems split on it, to be honest. And there's arguments for and against, obviously, that we saw in the comments, and we debated around this table as well. But I think one thing that I did notice that was consistent across the comments from those who are in favor of wards was that they feel underrepresented. And that's a serious issue to me. You know, I think it's very concerning when we have citizens who say they don't feel represented in the city, because I think that means we failed in a sense. We represent everybody, especially at large. And if people feel disenfranchised, democracy has failed. So that's something we need to work on, I think. Going more to the motion I just put forward, I think it's more clear in this case, if you look at the percentages, at least based on the survey, you have close to 44% that say we should move to eight councillors. Close to 36% say we should have six councillors. Combining the two numbers, you're at almost 80% of the people who responded to the survey say the council should be smaller. And I think good examples were brought up in the comments again, and we can look at good examples at municipalities within this province and across this country where smaller councils do exist in larger cities, larger urban centers, whereas we have 10 here. So I think it's time to make a decision on that. And I think 2022, you know, it's the next election cycle, it's well in advance of any formal notification and process we have to take, and I think it's the right time to do it. So 2022, we'll see a new council come forward. Thank you.
Next up? Counselor Grant?
Excuse me, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, you know, when you're asking a question without any background, when you're asking a group, most people don't understand the roles and responsibilities of a city councillor when it comes to committees, et cetera. I don't, I don't care if it's 10 councillors or eight councillors, it's going to make any difference to me because I'm not going to run again. But I know the work that goes on here. And whether it's eight councillors or 10 councillors, that work still has to get done. And it's easy to say, and it's a political, it's great politically to say, oh, we should have eight councillors. Well, give me some justification for that. That's just a number. But the amount of work that's being done day to day on a council's agenda and the number of committees that we're involved with, there's no reason to say, yeah, eight will do it. Well, I know darn well right now, there's a lot of councillors that aren't fulfilling the obligations of their job here. And it falls to the other councillors. So I don't like the word, the numbers that are being put around. I've been on council, this is my fourth term, and there's been 10 councillors, and I've worked hard every year. And to say that people don't call you, I get calls from every section of this city. Some are frivolous, but I answer them anyway. And so, as I say, it's a popular thing to say, well, let's reduce it to eight. Give me the justification for eight versus 10. That's what I want to hear. I haven't heard that yet.
Counselor Hollingsworth? And then Counselor Mack?
Just so that I'm crystal clear on what we're debating. Currently, the motion is to go to eight councillors. Because I noticed Counselor Towndell was talking about wards at some point, and I don't think that's the motion. Could I get it reread so that when I'm debating, I'm not out of order?
Of course.
Please.
The motion is to reduce the council composition for the 2022 election to eight councillors.
So that being said, Your Worship, if we go to some motion with regards to ward, I'm hoping that we get to debate that separately?
So this motion is only about the size of council? And, but because the report dealt with both issues, I think councillors are going to step into wards comments?
Well, with your indulgence, I'd prefer to debate the ward motion when it comes up, if it does, and kind of keep it nice and clean. So that being said...
You go ahead, Counselor Hollingsworth.
I'm not, thank you. I'm not going to support going to eight for a couple of reasons. First of all, there is no data in any of the reports that I've seen that would suggest eight is going to make council run more effectively, more efficiently. There is, now, there is some presupposition, I suppose, that suggests we'll be quicker. But that kind of is based on the logic that quicker is better, and quicker is not always better, right? We made a motion to support a hockey team years ago. It took about three or four, week or two to do, and that was not necessarily a good decision. So quicker is not better necessarily. The other thing is we talk about being all-inclusive. We want everybody to have their voice, we want everybody to be heard. And so by reducing the number of councillors, you run the risk of a group, or even a group, set of groups of people who will not have their voice heard because there will be less councillors to bring their concerns to the table. We discuss things like cities like Toronto being a ward system. Well, of course, they're a ward system, there are millions of people, they couldn't go to one at large even if they wanted to. So compare apples to apples. And while there are some ward and some at large, it's a mixed bag based on the previous reports. The other thing is we talk about responsibility. The other thing is, we talk about responsibilities in the municipality. The amount of people that work for the city of Cornwall are about 150 to 200 more people now are employed by the city than was in 1974, when we had 12 councillors and went to 10. My point is that councillors are expected to know more, be more aware, be more cognizant of all of the things. We talk about the new millennium and all the extra things that we have to be on top of. And now, we have a motion to say, "Let's get rid of people." We just hired a new employee a week or two ago, or will be, approved the position, because we said, "Look at all these things we have to do, and we need more people to keep on top of it." Yet somehow, we've decided that council lesses more. There is an old mantra that I used to hear when I worked at the Domtar that was, "Oh, we'll do more with less." Well, what in reality happens is you do less with less. There's just so much time and energy to go around the table. So, I have, as my colleague, Counselor Grant, has suggested, I see no evidence to suggest that having less will all of a sudden make us quicker and nimbler and be more efficient. I have yet to see it in any report, and nothing anybody has said thus far has suggested otherwise. So, I'm going to not support the motion, your worship.
Counselor Mack?
I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I would prefer to discuss wards and then discuss the number of people that are going to represent. If we vote to go to eight councillors, and then another motion comes up, we're going to go to the ward system, we have to figure out how many wards we're going to have and how many people are going to represent each ward. The fact is, you can do all the online comments or surveys you want. 65% of the people in this town couldn't care less. We have 10, eight awards, because that's how many don't come out to vote. So, they automatically show little or no interest in what's going on with this body. To say people are disenfranchised is not, I have a real tough time accepting that one. If you want to get involved, if you want to call your councillors to discuss an issue, complain, I think we're quite available if we're here. Going to eight, also, another issue I've been thinking about this afternoon, we have trouble getting people to committee meetings sometimes, as it is. So, you're dividing that workload from, divided by 10, you're going to be divided by eight. If you don't work, don't have a full-time job, it's very easy to represent people. But some people have full-time jobs. I'm fortunate, along with a few others around this council table. We're retired, so we can devote a lot to council work. Again, I go back to what Counselor Grant and Counselor Hollingsworth say. The science isn't there. I haven't seen it. I went through the report. There's no science that says that you work better with eight. Personally, I, when it comes down to it, I couldn't, it doesn't really bother me, because this is, I'm not running again. So, it's not a case where I'm trying to secure a seat on the next council by keeping the numbers as large as possible. I go back to the ward system. We're going to discuss the next thing. We're going to, somebody's going to bring a motion. Now, we got eight, we're down to eight. Now, we're going to discuss wards. I think we should be discussing wards first, and then the number of people who are going to represent, sit around the council table.
There is no motion yet.
I know, but I can see one coming.
But possibly. Is that it, Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I absolutely support everything that Counselor Hollingsworth said. I think he summarized everything. I will add one point that he didn't touch on, and it kind of relates to Counselor McIntosh's comments, too, that the ways in which we represent people. Some people think that the purpose of a councillor is that you've got one person out there fighting for you against City Hall. That if you want your snow cleared on a timely matter, there's got to be one person you can phone, and that person will get on the city, and you'll get your snow cleared. That is like maybe 2% of what we do, fielding complaints. Most of what we do is designing policy. And the day any councillor starts designing policy for their own neighbourhood, or their own block, or their own ward, that's the day we're running backwards as fast as we possibly can. We made an improvement when we moved away from wards. Let's not try to roll back the clock, and let's not undo, I think, what was a movement into developing a more unified and inclusive view and like a global picture of what the city needs, not what your neighbourhood needs, for heaven's sake. But the other point that I wanted to add to what Counselor Hollingsworth said was, when you reduce the amount of people that you have brainstorming on the policies that you want the whole city to adopt, then you inevitably cut out certain points of view. And as that number gets smaller, if you, we've gone to 10, say if we, well, no, we went from 12, eight, to 10, and then if we go to eight, I mean, if there's a progression here, you start getting smaller and smaller, and pretty soon, you've got two sides. So, the more numbers you have, the greater chance you have of having multiple points of view represented in those discussions, when the more points of view being represented is going to make for a richer, more representative community. And I don't mean representative just in terms of you've got somebody who's going to answer your phone when you've got a problem. Representative in that somebody's going to look at the needs of the whole city and work toward making sure that everybody in this city, not just your own neighbourhood, gets what you think is a good thing. Thank you.
Counselor Gardner?
I'm not going to repeat what everybody said, but in my notes, I had, it's my opinion that 10 councillors gives effective representation to our residents and allows for a wide variety of opinions around the table. And I understand what you're saying, Counselor McDonald. I looked at a few other comparable cities like North Bay. We're always compared to North Bay and Belleville. North Bay has 10 councillors, basically the same population. Belleville has eight councillors. They're making more money than we are. And one of the arguments that was made in one city was that if we reduce the number of councillors, then they'll ask for more raises to cover the work that they have to do. And I have to really, really, Counselor Grant hit the nail on the head. I have been, live in Riverdale. I have been an east end, the north end, the east Montreal Road, middle of the city. I have got calls left and right, probably because I'm retired from work. And those take up an awful lot of time. And when you have people who are working around the table here, they don't always have the time that we have to respond. And I'm not going to make a point of one in particular, but I can't, I can't support eight councillors. We've got a heck of a lot more work than we ever had before. We do the same amount of work as other communities. I mean, the province keeps giving us more and more work. 10 councillors, for me, is an effective representation of our residents, and I cannot support eight councillors.
Anyone else? Counselor Bauer, and then Counselor Bergeron?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I figured I'll throw my two cents out there. I'm not opposed to eight councillors. However, I'd love to see the position really reevaluated completely. I think what I'm more opposed of is the part-time nature of a position like this. There was a lot of work, and there's 10 of us doing it, but we're doing it at a very part-time basis. Many of us are working full-time jobs. And a lot of residents expect us to take our council position as if it were a full-time position. But unfortunately, financially, that's not possible, as it is below what a full-time minimum wage earner would receive. So, what I would love to see is if we work to go down to eight, to take that maybe a little bit of money that would be spared from two positions and invest it into, into council. There's a lot of comments in the, in the survey responses saying that if we cut down council, we should take that money and put it into, invest it in the waterfront. Well, sorry to say, folks, but if we were to take the money we'd save from having eight councillors, we could probably get a few benches on the waterfront. It's not a lot of money to start with. But folks seem to think we make a ton of money. If we did, I'd do it full-time, absolutely. But that's not the reality. I think, and since people are commenting on the ward system, I think what I would prefer over a ward system would be more of a portfolio system. So, if there are eight or 10 of us, we each have either a department we work closer with or a file that we work closer with, so that instead of folks needing to figure out which councillor is taking care of which neighbourhood, which councillor is working on environmental services, or which councillor is working on economic development files. So, not that they're doing the work. Of course, the department is doing the work, but they might be, you know, the liaison for the community. I think other cities do this. It would make one of us an expert in something. None of us are experts in anything right now. We all love our city. That's what we're an expert in. But a lot of these things come forward, and we're all sort of versed in it, not fully versed in really any of the issues. So, those are my two cents. I'd be fine with eight councillors, so long as we really reevaluate what it looks like going forward. And I'm definitely not in favor of the ward system. We don't have a large enough city. The comments reflect that. Oh, one comment while I'm speaking, that I've read quite a bit, is that folks would like councillors to reside in the city of Cornwall. It seems like people think a lot of us don't live in the city of Cornwall. And just while I have the mic, I think we all live in the city of Cornwall, correct?
We all live in the city of Cornwall.
Right. And you don't have to live. You can own property and live outside the city limits. So, that's, that's an option. But I don't think that's the case with this term of council. I think we're all happy residents of the city of Cornwall, whether we rent or we own. So, just wanted to sort of put that out to the world, since a lot of people think we don't live in the city. We love the city. We live in the city. We breathe the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Bergeron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a lot of a discussion happening here about wards, but the motion is about eight members of council, so I'll just speak to that.
Go ahead.
Ultimately, I'm in favor of eight councillors. I'm actually in favor of about five councillors and full-time councillors. But that, again, is not the motion on the floor today. You know, looking at my two years here so far, the difference between eight and 10, as to some people's comments, I don't see any logic or science on 10 either. So, to me, eight seems like a good first step. I would like to see, and when we talk about wards, maybe a bit of a referendum on this. But I'm actually okay with eight. I do really like what Counselor Hubert was mentioning about portfolios. I think our democracy needs to evolve a little bit, and councillors need to speak to certain items that we are looking at. So, you know, the portfolio system is not what the motion is. So, I'm not going to dive into that as well. I also think political parties should evolve in Cornwall, but that, again, isn't what we're talking about. Ultimately, I support the motion on the floor. I think, looking at the survey results, it's loud and clear that the people who took the survey want to see a smaller council. I think smaller is more efficient. I think we are not ultimately very efficient. I think we can make a lot of changes to how we operate to ensure that we're all doing the same amount of work, maybe not having two councillors, three councillors on certain committees. And I think ultimately, it will push the city forward. So, I support the motion. I look forward to the discussion on wards and other ways that we can improve our representation in this city.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The size of council and wards, for me, started during the last election. Not so much, I've had really good conversations about wards, but really, most of the conversation is focused on how many we were. And I think, look, when you look at the survey results here, the majority of people want a smaller council. I've chaired large groups and small groups in meetings, and I can tell you it's much more efficient and much easier to move something forward with a smaller group than as a larger group. So, I think, just from personal experience, and it's not a scientific study, but from personal experience, the smaller groups always seem to be a little bit more efficient. What I'm hearing, though, from three or four councillors, or five, actually, is, what proof do we have a smaller council that would be more efficient? And so, we have until 2021 to make this decision, the end of 2021. It doesn't have to be made tonight. So, I'm wondering if a motion to defer this, until we get more information about what communities are sized with smaller councils, how they function, what's the workload like? Is there an increased cost to councillors that are doing more work? I think if we had more of this information, we might be easier to make, to vote on whether we're going to be eight councillors or 10. So, I think if more information is needed, we have a little over a year to get that information. I don't see any reason to rush, so I would, I would like to put a motion to defer this vote, to get that information.
So, a motion to defer is always in order, as long as there's then a seconder. We can then have a debate. Seconder to the motion to defer? Yep. Can you use your mic, please? Thank you.
Thank you. If you second report, you don't, second a motion, you don't have to vote for it. But if you second a motion, can you defer it? A motion to defer. I've never seen it before, so this would be news for me, too.
Madam Clerk, you understand the question? So, Counselor Bennett seconded Counselor Towndale's motion. And so, Counselor Grant is suggesting that a motion to defer may not be in order if made by the seconder of the original-
I don't know that.
Well, I'm just rephrasing and asking the clerk the question.
I don't see why it wouldn't be in order. Based on the discussions that were had, Counselor Bennett has a different view now than when he seconded it. It's just like when there's a vote, he doesn't have to vote in favor, even though he seconded it.
So, there is the-
But-
Counselor Grant?
But he does have a different view. He has a, he wants to get more information. So, I think at this time, it would be, I've never seen anybody do it, so I don't know if that's, it's in order. So, I hate to lose something because it's not in order.
Okay. Is there any rule against a seconder of a motion?
Not off the top of my head. Madam Mayor, I'd have to research it, but my gut instincts would tell me that it would be in order.
Okay. So, I have a motion to defer made by Counselor Bennett, and I'm looking for a seconder, and then we'll debate that motion. Are you seconding the motion, Counselor McDonald?
I am. I was also going to suggest that if there's any question about this being out of order, I don't mind making the motion to defer. Would that be acceptable or preferable? As Counselor Grant says, you'd hate to see it unravel because of a procedural-
I, I think the Madam Clerk is correct in her ruling, but if this is going to make it easier than Counselor McDonald, Counselor Bennett, would you second Counselor McDonald's motion?
I would.
Okay. So, I trust Madam Clerk will check into that thoroughly for any future discussion.
I will, Madam-
I think you are correct. But for the purposes of discussion, motion to debate. Who is next to speak? Madam, sorry.
As a mover of the motion.
You go ahead.
Well, I fully support Counselor Bennett's call for more information. And I think what we do as a council, anytime we're making a decision that affects something to do with council, we tend to look at other municipalities and what they do. And I think more information is certainly in order. Let's see what's done across the province with municipalities our size. We did that for a council remuneration. And I think that when we're talking council size, we should, too. And I think one other point of information we should look for is, when a council changes its constitution or its size, its complement, does that usually get decided in a referendum? Or, I know legally, we can do it in a bylaw, but I think I heard that when the movement was made from 12 to 10, that was the result of a referendum. So, I'd like that to be built into the, the information that we're looking for, too, that how are these changes usually made? that how are these changes usually made?
Thank you. Councillor Mack?
I'll support the motion. I have mixed feelings with the eight, you know, but just give a chance to look at the wards. I said, I'd prefer looking at the ward system first, then going back to see how many people serve in the council, and see what those boundaries in the ward system would be, what the, you know, population breakdown would be. So I'll support this. Nobody's got a gun to our head, we're not in any huge rush here, so, got lots of, we've got lots of time.
Councillor Grant?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to understand, we're deferring for what purpose?
Madam Clerk?
Just to give clarification to administration, because that's where it's going to come back from.
Madam Clerk?
From my understanding, Madam Mayor, the motion is to defer to find out more information from other councillors, but what I'm unclear of is that research is supposed to be done by administration or by councillors?
Well, that, the motion is speaking to getting additional information, correct?
Yes, that's, my intention is that we seek information from other municipalities across the province to see what their composition is relative to their population. And then, secondly, if they do change their complement of councillors to population, is that done through bylaw or is it done through a referendum?
Councillor Bennett? Were you supporting that?
Yes, I'm, I'm supporting that.
Councillor Grant?
Just for more clarification, I don't think that's giving enough information to administration to, to do this. And the reason I'm saying that is, if I'm on administration right now, I want to know exactly what I'm looking for, the size of council, the size of the city, but what are the responsibilities individually in those, those municipalities as well? There's so many aspects to the work that city councillors do in different municipalities. I think to give administration a fair description of what we want, we have to give them that description. And I don't, I don't see it right now.
Okay. Councillor McDonald, and then I'm going to go to Councillor Abah.
So a friendly amendment to my own motion, that we also pull those other municipalities to see what the duties are, for example, how many committees that each councillor sits on. So as much information as possible about the scope of work and the number of people in the city that the councillors live in, that they represent. Let's cast a wide net, find out all we can, and if anybody else has another friendly amendment to add, please jump in.
Councillor Bennett?
I'm good with that, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Abah?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was the comment I was going to make, I think in, in Councillor Bennett's original motion. He mentioned workload, so how many committees are these councillors sitting on? How many meetings per month they have opposed to ours? How big are their agendas? Comparing them to ours, are they 300 pages, are they 50-page agendas? What size budgets they are managing? So, yeah, workload, scope of work. I think that, to me, is more important than necessarily, you know, the population, whatnot, right? So, it's important, but workload is more important for me.
Anyone else on the motion to defer? Sorry. Anyone else on the motion to defer? Councillor Hollingsworth?
Just as a point, I, I think Councillor McIntosh, I'm not a big fan of deferring this, quite frankly, but I will admit that I think we need to decide what we're doing with the ward thing before we decide what we're doing with the councillor thing, kind of a cart before the horse. So the only reason, quite candidly, that I'm supporting a deferral is I think the motions have been made perhaps in a little bit of a mixed-up order. So I'll defer so that we can do the ward thing, because I think that's what should be dealt with first. Thank you, Your Worship.
Anyone else on the motion to defer? Councillor Bergeron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So ultimately, I'll, I'll support this deferral as well. At the end of the day, this conversation is kind of proving that sometimes eight would be better than 10, but at the end of the day, maybe a special council meeting is in order just for this subject. I have a feeling we're going to get lost in procedural rules here about wards, about council size. So the question is always, what is the motion? The motion is a deferral, yes, I support it.
Anyone else on the deferral? Councillor Towndale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Initially, I wasn't going to support the deferral, but I will, to get more information so we can all make a better informed decision. There's nothing wrong with that, in fact, it's good to make informed decisions. But I was concerned about some of the comments around the table tonight, you know? Saying 65% of people don't care what we do here, then why are we even here? You know, that, that's, that's just not appropriate, in my opinion. Saying that we don't believe people are disenfranchised, well, we're getting comments from citizens that they are disenfranchised, so what? We're not going to believe them when they put this in a public consultation and submit it to us? I take those comments seriously, I think we all should. But I'm looking forward to getting more information on this, so that we can have a debate on it. Maybe Councillor Bergeron is correct, you know, we need to have a special council meeting to determine all of this and have a proper debate on it, decide, you know, are we going to do a referendum on both questions? Or are we going to pass motions here? But I think, you know, what was it, 1,700 responses? And unfortunately, we weren't able to have in, in camera, or sorry, in-person consultation due to COVID-19, but that's some of the largest responses we've ever gotten on a survey. And I think the numbers, at least for the size of council, were pretty clear, so. But I look forward to the future debate. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the deferral? Councillor Gardner?
I'll just defer, I'll support the deferral for more information. Although we're elected to make decisions, I think this is going to draw over and over for a long time. When we're elected, we're elected to make decisions, and I think we should have made one tonight, we haven't. I'll support the deferral for more information. I don't know if it'll change my position.
Councillor Grant, did you want to add anything?
So before I, I go to Councillor McDonald to wrap up, if she wants to on her motion to defer, I'll just say, and I, I will always generally explain why I'm, I vote. So just letting people know that when I'm going to vote, I explain why, because I, I'm elected to do so. I'm going to support the deferral. I, I do want to remind people that we have a town hall policy that is coming before council at some point. It's being drafted, we are going to have input and review of that policy, and it may give us some scope for the types of conversations that we're having now, where we want to involve the public. We did so in a survey, we may want to go further in that kind of involvement to help guide us, because this is very much about our democratic process, the way that we govern ourselves and govern this city. So I want to just remind people that that, that is coming, and I'm looking forward to that, to that debate around the policy and doing, doing more in terms of involving the public. I support the deferral. Councillor McDonald, did you want to add anything?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think everything's been said, I'm ready to vote.
All in favor of the deferral? Against? Councillor Towndale, are you voting against?
I know, Madam Mayor, I think there was a lag on my end.
Oh, okay, no problem. Carried. Is there any other direction that councillor wants, council wants to give on these topics at this time? No other motions coming forward on this matter? Councillor Bergeron?
Is this including the ward system, is that...
On this matter, it includes both. So it's the Electoral System Review Survey Results includes both the wards and the size of council, so anyone wanting to make any more motions on this matter can do so now.
Thank you, then, yeah, I would make a motion that we discuss ward systems at a town hall meeting.
So, Madam Clerk? Is that a motion that's in order?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it is.
Can you, can you reread that?
Yeah, it's a motion to discuss wards at a future town hall meeting.
Seconded by? Councillor Gardner, debate. Councillor Towndale?
I was looking to second, Madam Mayor.
Oh, Councillor Gardner seconded. Did you want to speak to it? Do you want to wait?
No, I'm good, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Councillor Hollingsworth?
Just a question, in terms of a town hall meeting, whichever the topic is, I mean, the ward thing is fine, but like, how does that work? Are we going to tell people tonight we're discussing wards and you're all invited? Or are we going to have like a myriad of topics that people can wade into? Are we going to have like call-in type scenario? Like, so I guess my point is, Your Worship, if I'm going to vote in favor of a motion, I'd kind of like to know what it is I'm actually voting for, because the format may not be suitable or I may not be satisfied with it. So before I say yes or no, like, what is it, like, how does this work?
So I'm going to turn to Madam CAO. I'm going to turn to Madam CAO, because administration has been tasked, you will remember that we renewed our procedural bylaw, and part of that bylaw was that we would put in place a town hall policy. That's been in the hands of the CAO and administration, so she can potentially address that and provide more detail.
Perhaps follow-up, maybe as an additional, like, if you don't have a clean answer yet, when could we expect a clean answer?
So you've had two questions for Madam CAO. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we have done, there has been quite a bit of work done on a town hall policy, so that should be coming to council, I would suggest, within the next two, two or three meetings, or sooner. I think when we have looked to some other municipalities that have had town hall meetings, really it's an opportunity for the public to come in and be provided with, I think, a certain amount of time, maybe a couple of minutes, where they can provide comments verbally to council, right? So in many of our council meetings, we have presentations, we have delegations, but the community in general that comes to a council meeting is not allowed to speak. So a town hall meeting primarily would be elected officials and the public, an opportunity for the public to come in and address council. We've looked at other matters where individuals may want to come in and do a presentation at council, depending on our agendas, how many meetings we have, sometimes those presentations might be better formatted in a town hall format. Specifically, maybe if you're soliciting some feedback as a new council, maybe with strategic priorities, there could be some assistance from administration to try and identify certain subject matters, such as this one tonight, to gain, an opportunity to gain more dialogue with the community and come in and have their comments shared with council. So those are some of the things that we're looking at. The one thing as well that I think we want to make sure of, we could develop a town hall policy, we could schedule town hall meetings, but you want to make sure that people in the community want to show up and speak to whatever matter it is that's allowed to be placed on that agenda. So I know in the past, sometimes we've had open houses, we've sometimes had opportunities for public engagement, and we have often not had a lot of turnout. So if we're going to have a town hall meeting, I think you want to try and make sure that we take advantage of the subject matters to engage the community and hopefully make it very beneficial and productive for both council and the community.
Councillor Hollingsworth?
Well, just a, fair enough, Your Worship, I mean, in the last election, I think we were about 38% voter turnout, so I'm not, that's the hard number, by the way, that's not just some mythical number, it's, you can check it yourself.
Yeah, it's between 37 and 38%. You are correct.
Yeah, so I guess my point is, the fear I have with going to some town hall scenario is, as the CAO has already articulated, we may not get a great deal of feedback, but I guess if it saves us the cost of a referendum, I suppose I can support it on principle, so I'll, I'll support it. I'm not completely convinced it's the way to go, but we'll give it a whirl, I suppose. Thank you.
Councillor Grant, and then Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we have to bring in COVID-19 into this discussion as well, because how many town hall meetings can you have today? And we don't know when this is going to end, so. And secondly, I'm not going to support, because I, I think this should be a ballot question. So I would support a motion, or I would make a motion if this turned out that, that the ward system is, will be part of our referendum on, and be a ballot question at the next election.
Councillor McDonald, and then Councillor, Councillor Mack. Councillor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I was going to bring up the point of COVID, too, and I was going to suggest that we should set a timeline to when we can have this town hall meeting, and if it isn't within a certain amount of time, then we have to go to an alternative plan. So I, I really can't, there, there are other methods than simply a, a big meeting, but we've already got the results of that. I mean, there was a survey, you know? Like, I don't know what more we can accomplish during COVID, so I think, I guess, you hate to ever say you don't support it, but I mean, I don't think it can happen. So, so that's it. And I think we should set a timeline, maybe next spring, that will be the deadline. And if we haven't been able to have a town hall meeting by that time, then we have a council debate about the possibility of going to ward system.
Are you amending the motion? Would that be an amendment that's in order, Madam Clerk? Or, okay.
I don't even know, is there a motion on the floor? Yes, that we, okay. Well, if we just go with that motion, that we have a town hall meeting, what we have to do is build in what the effects of that town hall meeting will mean. If the town hall meeting is overwhelmingly, well, it's just, it's going to express opinion, we have to recognize that's not going to be a referendum, it's just going to be an open forum for opinion, and that still the decision that we'll have to make as a council is going to still be current after that town hall meeting. So, I mean, have it if we can.
Madam CAO, is, is this possible within a proper timeline? To get a policy back and to have a discussion around what that might look like, what a town hall might look like, pre-COVID and post-COVID?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I think the policy absolutely can be brought forward to council, as I said, within the next two or three meetings. One of the components within the policy is a electronic or virtual format that I think we would like to build in through our experiences with COVID-19. So, you know, whether we can have a virtual meeting of council, if it's required, and have participation in a certain format that would allow people to bring forward their questions or comments to council, we can, I think we can take a look at that. I think that's, and then as far as a timeline goes, we, I think, first of all, need to bring the policy to council. We need council to approve the policy or provide us with direction if they want changes within that policy. And then from, from that perspective, then we would start to plan our town hall, our first town hall meeting.
And by policy, you mean the policy on how to conduct a town hall? Yes.
Correct.
Good.
Councillor Mack?
Yeah, my questions were around the fact that we're on chartered territory when it comes to meetings. We actually don't, we have, some councillors don't feel safe coming here, how can we have the public inviting to a town hall meeting? Certainly isn't going to happen in the traditional sense, in the next four or five months, not the way things are going. I think the, if you really wanted to get, test public opinion of this, you put it on a ballot and ask them to vote, vote on it, rather than trying to get some kind of a consensus on a town hall meeting, and as I think the CAO pointed out, town hall meetings haven't been all that successful in the past. I think the last successful town hall meeting was when the discussion to what kind of aquatic center they were going to build, and they actually had about 400 people out that night to debate the issue, which really helped sway the council's decision at the time. So, you know, we're, when you say we're going to have a town hall meeting, okay, when? Well, we don't know, so. You know, do it by Zoom or what? Anyway, the traditional town hall meeting just ain't going to work, not at this time.
Any further discussion? Councillor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just, I'm going to pretty much just say again what I said about the, the council's size, is that we have until the end of 2021. is that we have until the end of 2021 to make a decision on this. So clearly, there will be no town hall meetings in the next three, four, five, six months. Um, but maybe by, uh, next July, August, September, maybe things change. Um, but I think it's important to have one, mostly because a lot of people, we don't know what type of a ward system would even work, or if one will, will work. So do we, would it be a ward system with councillors at large as well? Um, the people that, uh, were trying to engage as far as our community goes probably would like some information about that as well. And the conversation, I think, would be a learning opportunity for everyone, ourselves, uh, our residents. Uh, because to make a comment, I, I've read lots of the comments, and, and it just seemed to me like there didn't seem to be a, a real understanding from some of the comments about how a ward system works. So to me, there needs to be some education going both ways as well. Um, so I think the town hall could do that. And just because we have a town hall doesn't necessarily mean we can't have a referendum either. So we have a town hall next year at this time, and the information's out there, and, and there's still an appetite, uh, to, to go forward with it, one way or the other. I'm not opposed to having a referendum on this particular debate, just because when you look at the survey results, it was so close. Um, it's not like it was for the size of council. The size of council was pretty clear, they were looking for something, some change. This is different. It was almost fifty-fifty in favor and not. But I think more of that is the fact that maybe some people don't have all the information they need, um, to make an informed decision on how they feel about a ward system. Because just to say, we'll have six wards and, or four wards and eight councillors and, who knows what it could be? So, uh, I think the conversations have to happen so that everybody who's, wants to make a vote on this, public included, if we go to a referendum, need all that information. Um, because I don't think any of us have it all. Thank you.
Anybody else on this? Counselor Bergeron, Counselor Bergeron, you made the motion, you'll wrap up at the end. Counselor Towndale, did you wanna speak?
All right, I will, um, support the motion. Town halls, I chaired a PAC meeting on the location of where Walmart was going to go. I remember attending that here in this building. And there were lots of people in that meeting. I remember attending in this room, a meeting about the waterfront and whether we should use the parking lot next to the civic complex to, um, put some housing there. So there are issues, there are sort of town hall meetings that we've had in the last few years that have played the role of town hall meetings, but we don't have a town hall policy. This is not something that council, councils have done formally. And I'm really looking forward to this conversation about town hall meetings. I picture something like you have people who are going to argue for debate, for wards and against, and you have a, a mock debate where you're, both sides are talking about the good and the bad, and you're having people interacting in that debate, or asking questions, or fueling that debate. So there are different ways for us to, uh, talk to people, educate people, and get their feedback. I was on, well, several Zoom meetings today, but the one that I started my day off with had a hundred participants, and I gave a presentation on diversity and inclusion. And so there were chat questions, there was a moderator, I took questions, gave a presentation. There are all kinds of ways, using technology, for us to, um, virtually get feedback, virtually educate people. What does that look like? I mean, we're not exactly sure yet. That changes from one week to the next. But I think we should give ourselves the opportunity to take a look at this policy, make something really innovative, creative, and then try it out. Nothing wrong with that. Counselor Bergeron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just wanna point out that a, a motion for a town hall does not mean it doesn't go on a ballot. I, I fully support this going on a ballot as a referendum. I actually waited for you to call twice to see if anyone had a motion. So find it odd that that's a topic of conversation. If we want it on a ballot, it could be a motion done tonight.
Or later.
Also, yeah, uh, well, but that was why I asked the question. I, I completely think a, a town hall is, is in order here and is necessary. Uh, it's not to say you can't have a virtual town hall. Um, you know, attending by Zoom doesn't mean I don't feel safe, uh, to the comment that I heard. Uh, there are just ways of having, utilizing technology right now to, uh, better what we're trying to do here. So a virtual town hall, to me, is, is just as, as doable. Uh, at the end of the day, I think this is a big decision for our city, and I think a town hall is absolutely the next step we should be taking. Thank you.
All in favor? Against? Carried. Madam Clerk?
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, solid waste bag tag and bulky item collection tags. The recommendation is that council direct administration to implement the bag tag program as documented within, uh, the initial garbage tag fee of one dollar and fifty cents per additional bag. And B, that council direct administration to proceed with the implementation of the bulky item collection program as outlined in this report.
Is there a motion to?
Madam Mayor, we've skipped ahead an item in the agenda?
Should be the R F P play structures? Thank you, Counselor.
Let me go back to R F P, Terms of Reference for Play Structures and Engineered Wood Fiber for Various Parks. The action recommended is that council receive this report and provide direction to administration to proceed with the R F P for play structures and engineered wood fiber for various parks with a budget for the Benson Center play structure at, A, the current budget of one hundred thousand dollars, or B, an increased budget of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Madam C A O? Can you, uh, remind us of the history here?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So previously, uh, terms of reference for this R F P were brought forward on a council agenda as a consent item. Uh, council pulled that item for discussion. I believe that the input and the discussion around the table with respect to the play structure at the Benson Center was to look at, uh, something that would be unique, might have, um, visibility from a tourism perspective, might have a bit of a wow factor as well. And I think direction was given to, uh, administration to go back and come back with a revised terms of reference to incorporate, uh, some of that input. Uh, the report in front of you this evening outlines some examples of play structures and their approximate cost. So depending on council's expectations, the play structure is funded from federal gas tax funds. So administration is recommending, depending on what council would like to do, they want something that is a little bit more substantive, might be, uh, more recognizable, then consideration might wanna be given to the amount of budget that we put towards a structure at the Benson Center.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'd like to move that we adopt the second recommendation, the increased budget of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It'll allow us to, uh, get that wow factor and have a state-of-the-art play center. Because the Benson Center really is the premier sports venue in the city, and a lot of people come to visit. And this is one example, since there are two other parks mentioned here, this is one example of why a ward system would be poison here. Because we couldn't possibly allocate an extra fifty thousand dollars to one park without the councillors who are responsible for Amy LeBlanc Park and Francis Gano Park, without them protesting. So, uh, because we're one council, with all of us at large, we agreed that we should do something to enhance the, uh, design for, uh, this park. And, and I hope, uh, we'll continue, we'll support the motion to go to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Is there a seconder? Counselor Bennett? Debate? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'm in, I'm in favor of, of the extra money. And, and one of the biggest reasons for me was, uh, the inclusion of a Little Takes a Blue Special Needs Swing, um, that will allow, uh, kids an opportunity to actually feel like what it feels like to be on a play structure and, and be able to swing, uh, like everybody else does. Um, I think it's important, uh, that we look after in our play structures, uh, those with special needs. Uh, so, um, you know, having these ramps that go into these play structures are great, but they don't lead to a whole lot that they can do. So I think this really, um, includes, uh, those kids more so than, than the, what the original play structure did. So I'm, uh, in favor of this for sure.
Counselor Towndale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I definitely in favor of this. I mean, it, the money from the gas tax we use for playground equipment, I think is great. It's a great investment. It'll give us something that is the centerpiece to show off our city. Uh, you know, to Counselor McDonald's point, I would disagree with that. I mean, we're, there's a picture here of a play structure in Rayla Long Park. That was based, that got installed based on a motion I made a budget for 2019. I don't live in that neighborhood. So I mean, you don't have to live in a neighborhood to support putting play structures across the city. Thank you.
Anybody else on this motion? All in favor? Against? Carried.
Solid waste bag tag and bulky item collection tags. The action recommended is that, A, council direct administration to implement the bag tag program as documented with an initial garbage tag fee of one hundred and, or one dollar and fifty cents per additional bag. And B, that council direct administration to proceed with the implementation of the bulky item collection program as outlined in this report.
Is there a motion from council? Counselor Aba, Counselor Grant? You, you moving the items as recommended? Is there a seconder? Counselor Grant? Debate? Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I support both these recommendations. And I do have a question. Um, it has to do with the fact that to get the, uh, bag tag, uh, so far, the availability is going to be City Hall, so I guess that means a visit to City Hall. I'm just hoping that, uh, for the implementation, we can come up with an alternative. I don't know how many people are going to need that extra bag, but I, I think everybody at some point may. And it would be nice that you didn't have to go to a central point. So I hope maybe you'd be able to order them online and have them mailed out to you, you know, if you paid with your credit card or something like that. So I support it, even if we don't have an alternative way to get them. But I hope that, um, the staff at, um, uh, Solid Waste will consider, uh, an extra way that we can get the bag tags.
I believe the report contemplates secondary locations for that. Mr. Goodwin? Just yes? Or Mr. Kew? Okay?
Hi, yes.
Have a seat, have a seat. Thank you.
Uh, thank you through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yes, we are looking at, uh, a number of, um, secondary locations. Uh, we reached out and we kind of polled Len at Transit's brain a little bit. Um, so he's got a bunch of, um, good locations that we're looking at. Uh, there is, uh, opportunity to expand should we identify locations outside, uh, those specific locations already. Um, I'm talking remote neighborhoods that typically aren't serviced by the transit route. Len, obviously, in Transit have, uh, put most of their locations where transit is serviced.
Any further discussion on this motion? Counselor, okay. Counselor Bennett and then Counselor Bergeron and Towndale. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, when I was looking through, uh, what other communities do, um, there was one, one section, and I can't find it to save my life right now, uh, that dealt with families, larger families. So if somebody, it was specific to, um, families with young children at home, and you're going to create more garbage when you have young children at home. Uh, my wife and I lucky to fill a container in a week, but if, when I remember when my kids were small, there was three, three bags a week minimum. Um, so it, it covered things like diapers and all those things that you have, small families have to worry about. And they got forty tags per year per family to use, um, because of those circumstances. So I'm just wondering, I saw it there, is that something we could, um, we could consider doing here?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, no, that's an excellent question. Um, we are, uh, looking at a bunch of, uh, different, uh, options for exemptions. Uh, currently, we offer medical exemptions when we introduce a six-bag limit that, um, six-bag limit has been pretty generous, so there isn't too many. But there is a handful of, uh, residences and organizations that do use the, uh, medical waste. Uh, there's a couple, a couple of ideas that we've looked at so far. Um, there's large family incentives. Now, we're hoping to deal with a lot of those large family requests when we do our public consultation and I do our one-on-one kind of, as we identify the people that are still having a hard time meeting the four-bag limit and then the two-bag limit. That's where we're hoping to kind of identify those. Uh, but there's, uh, other ideas that, that we've seen throughout the, uh, the province of Ontario. Um, some places use clear bags for diapers, and then they don't need any tags, so there is no logistics for having the tags or getting tags to families that need them. You simply put them in a clear bag, which, um, I was saying, I have a young, uh, twenty-month-old myself, and the diaper genie bags are already transparent. So if you put them into another clear, transparent bag, you could put them out, and you wouldn't need a tag if you didn't have one.
I'm really glad to hear that. I was gonna actually ask you, my next question was gonna be about the medical, um, bag collection. So I'm glad you're considering it, uh, 'cause I know there's a lot of young families that are, uh, a little bit nervous about paying a little bit extra, being penalized for having two, three kids. Thanks.
Counselor Bergeron and then Counselor Towndale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is about the revenue from the bag tags. I'm not sure who to direct it to. I just, the financial implications in the report says that the revenue generated from the sale of bag tags and bulky items will recover the cost of administration, production, and distribution of the tags. Are we saying that the dollar fifty essentially just pays for us to be able to charge a dollar fifty? Is there no revenue that will be coming to help us cover the cost of the, the landfill? Because that seemed to be the conversation we had, uh, a little while ago.
Is that for you? Yes?
Sure, yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. Um, that's a good question. Uh, we are, uh, looking at, uh, the tickets that we are gonna sell. We're hoping that the, we don't really gen- generate that much revenue, to be honest. In a perfect world, uh, there wouldn't be even a need for the bag tags. Um, so, and in terms of where to put it, if, if we do discover a surplus of, of revenue, then one option, um, and the option that the department, and, uh, is kind of looking at, if that happens, which we, we don't foresee being that many, uh, sales initially, especially, uh, you can put it against the, uh, the landfill deficit.
Counselor Bergeron?
We can put, yeah, sorry. But the, the dollar fifty was set to be revenue neutral ultimately. That's where that number came, was come up with.
Through you, Madam Mayor. That's correct, yes.
So personally, I would have liked to see that higher as a, a revenue stream. Um, a dollar fifty is, is quite low. If we're trying to get people to, uh, reduce their garbage, the incentive should be that we ultimately make some revenue to, uh, the, the landfill project coming up. It's gonna be a huge amount of money. So I, I support this motion. I support having tags. I, I support reducing waste, but I would have liked to see, uh, the bag tags ultimately be more than a dollar fifty. Thank you.
Counselor Towndale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I actually had some comments on the, uh, bulk item collection and whatnot. We're talking about, uh, tires, for example, and the drop-off fee. This came up, uh, earlier this year, I think, uh, prior to COVID, or it was late last year. Uh, bicycle shops in town, uh, raised a concern when they were disposing of tires because they were being charged the same amount at that time as vehicle tires. It's quite a substantial difference. You know, we're promoting an active lifestyle in the community, so obviously, this is something that we should look at. Tires come in different sizes, and especially for bicycles, I think we should be looking at what the actual cost is to accept them and process them versus a vehicle tire, uh, to alleviate the strain on that particular business, especially considering they go through them a lot more, uh, for example, than vehicle tires. Uh, but I did have a question. Uh, on page eleven of the consultant's report, it talks about accepting plastics number three and four, but I was under the impression we don't accept those, that we take one, two, and five. So I was hoping for clarity on that point, please.
Mr. Kewen? Or Mr. Goodwin?
So, through you, Madam Mayor. That's the specifics I can get back to you on that. I'm not sure, right, I don't have that information right in front of me.
Did you have, you got the question, though? You noted the question?
Yes, through you. I do know the question, I just, the specifics, I don't call it by the material type. We call it PET mixed HDP low-density polyethylene. We call it by the material name, so the actual grade specifics, I just have to, I don't have that information in front of me to match it to the specific material that we send out to market.
You can get that to council at a later time. Counselor Towndale, is that okay?
That's okay. For clarity in the report, it references number three as PVC and number four is LDPE, if that helps.
So, yes, so thank you so much for that, Counselor. So, that is the, what we call, we're shipping that out as PC plastic, which is essentially your films. So, your plastic bags, grocery bags, that all gets mixed, which we didn't use to, that used to be landfill, but we started diverting that.
Okay, so we can put, just sorry to confirm, we can put PVC number three and LDPE number four into our blue bins now for collection? Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ebert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Further to that point, I was under the impression that we had stopped accepting this at the landfill, since it is not a very desirable product. Last time I received a tour of the recycling facility, we had these bales of this plastic film that sort of just sat there until someone wanted to take it off of our hands, but we weren't really making any money off of it, so we were discouraging residents from recycling plastic film and just encouraging them to stop using it in general. I thought that was more so the path we were going.
Response?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. So, we aren't promoting it.
Okay.
But, and it does cost, the city does not recover the cost to process the material by any means, but we are saving the $151 a time going into the landfill site.
Perfect. Kojiko, edit the last three minutes. Thank you.
Well, do we all have clarity? Mr. Kewen, is that clear for people?
It's something that is, it could be clear. Administration will definitely get that word out. There's definitely some discrepancies, especially with people using transparent recycling bags. That's a big question that we have, and we're kind of on the fence with that. It's very hard to limit that and to discourage that. We do try to discourage people on, as we speak to them, and tell them that we do offer our blue boxes for a very affordable price at City Hall, $5 plus tax, and that is a better way to go, but some people are set in their ways with their films, and that's why we continue to accept it.
There's a Recycling Coach as well, eh?
Yes, so we do have an app called the Recycling Coach, and you can actually type your material into the app, and it's also available on the website, and it'll tell you exactly what to do with it.
Okay. Anybody else on this? Counselor Mack?
I don't know who sent it out, but I got something in the mail last week. What's recyclable, what isn't? I put it on my fridge door, because even sometimes I've been sorting things out and go, uh-uh. If it's uh, into the garbage it goes, but I'm not sure.
An actual piece of cardboard that you got with the information?
Yeah, whoever sent that out, that's great. Now, when it comes to, I'm quite happy with the $1.50. You're gonna, this is going to be a real learning curve for a lot of people. I think the survey that I saw said that the average is two, are two bags. The average is two bags being put out, just that some only put out one, and other, some people put out five. I know in my area of town, I just drove around the other night, checked that out, and sure enough, you know, some people had three, but no more. I'm told that the people that put out five and six bags don't put out recycling bins. That was in our report, too. Interestingly, I was talking to the mayor of South Starmont, and he said that when they brought the bag limit in with the tags, suddenly recycling went up. So, it shows that, again, it was a learning curve for them. Counselor Bennett brings up a good point, families. It's easy for me, there's, we're, you know, two people in a household, we don't produce a lot of garbage, throw four kids in the mix, and you've got a lot more garbage, so. Interesting thing, I had three bags the other day, and I said, I wonder how I can make them two. I actually was able to pack the extra third bag into the other two bags by just packing it rather than just throwing it in the bag. So, it can be, there are novel ways of getting around that. I had a call from one resident, and he said, what about the day after Christmas, when you've got a lot more garbage? Could you not have one day, like, post-Christmas where you say, okay, you can have five bags instead of four? I like the idea that, I understand in the report, too, the tags, $1.50, but you buy them in packages of 10 rather than individually, you can, which is good, because that saves administration. But it's going to be a learning curve. There are certain areas of town where the bulk, when it comes to bulk items, Chesterfields, couches, mattresses sit on a curb, boulevard, and eventually, I guess, the city has to pick it up because nobody's going to claim it. That's the, I get the most complaints about, and about the bulk, couches and fridge, or stoves, and that, so, you know, it just, and it looks terrible, see, on a boulevard. But again, it's going to be a learning curve and a big adjustment for some people. And we are going to have people that are going to just say, hey, I'll throw it in the vacant lot down the street or whatever, but it's the only way to go. We've got to go that direction.
Any response from administration on any of that? Mr. Goodwin gestured towards Ms. Meldrum. I think she may have been the one responsible for sending out the cards of information. Yes?
That was correct, yes.
Okay. Anybody else on this topic? Yeah, Counselor Ebert?
Quick little comment.
Go ahead.
Plastic film, as in grocery bags, on Recycle Coach says it should go to the landfill. I would like for it to stay that way, to discourage people from using it, but that's just what Recycle Coach is telling me, so, okay.
Can administration remind us as to the cost of the landfill, closing it and replacing it?
So, the closure cost is roughly $38 million in the DFA report. We, a rough estimate is to opening a new landfill, the price keeps going up with new government regulations that continue to be implemented, so initial estimates are upwards, over $50 million for sure.
$50 million. So, did you want to speak before I finish?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be quick.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Just one other question. Did we not hear a report that even opening and closing landfill sites right now is becoming almost impossible, even if we had $50 million bucks to spend?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, that's correct, and that $50 figure is very low. It'll be more than that, probably closer to the 100.
Fair enough. I guess the point is your worship. I'm not excited about families who are pretty big having to try to figure out how to make this work, but when you realize the alternative is we may not even have the option of opening a landfill site 10 years from now, and then, what, we're going to put it in trucks and drive it to someplace else? So, while I'm not a champion of seeing big families have to scrabble around, because there's only so much room in the end, so to speak, I think it's just an alternative we have no choice but to make.
So, I think what we did here in response to Counselor Bennett's question was that there was some room for some flexibility and coaching around recycling and exemptions for larger families and medical waste. So, I think that that's important to remember, and then $50 million plus, plus, and maybe no answer beyond that. So, this is not something that, that is easy. This kind of change is part of a transition, as Counselor Mack was talking about, but these are the numbers that we need to be reminded of every time we have this conversation about our landfill. We have to lead with those dollars in our minds so that we understand why these changes are being made. They're hard, but it's going to be harder 10 years from now if we don't actually start diverting very seriously away from our landfill. All in favor? Against? Carried.
The next item is the unfinished business listing for September 28th. The action recommends that council receive this listing.
Moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor McDonald. All in favor? Carried.
Under communication, we have one report. MTO Connecting Links Program intake six, project application. The recommendation is that council approve the following: that council endorse the submission of an application to the 202122 MTO Connecting Links Program, and that the project submitted for funding program be a municipal class environmental assessment for Brookdale Avenue from Seventh Street West to Fourteenth Street West.
Moved by Counselor Grant, seconded by Counselor Bennett. Discussion, questions? Counselor Towndale, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question on this one. I noticed that the, the part of Brookdale that's included seems to include the traffic circle. So, is this the same environmental assessment that didn't pass council previously, or at least contained that environmental assessment? And what are we setting to the province in terms of the traffic circle itself? Like, what is the goal of the environmental assessment for the traffic circle portion? Thank you.
Mr. Fother?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So, yes, this will include the traffic circle component. This EA includes Seventh Street but all the way up to Fourteenth Street. The traffic circle is really just one component of the, of this environmental assessment. A technical review will be completed, and recommendations will be made through this study, which will ultimately be brought back to council for endorsement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Fother, apparently, we're at ratings of 56 to 58 for this zone. Are there other zones? I mean, is this the, the next logical project that has to be funded? And what's the next one after that? Like, where are we in terms of zones with that lower rating?
Through you, Madam Mayor. On Brookdale Avenue itself, it's the lowest, so it's the lowest section, so we've recently reconstructed South Seventh Street and recently reconstructed North Fourteenth Street. We recently received funding for another section, which is Brookdale Avenue North, so that will be proceeding to construction next year. On Brookdale Avenue itself, this is the lowest PCR reading.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Against? Carried.
There are new, no new business motions, Madam Mayor. Passing of bylaws. Bylaws 2020, 122 to 126 inclusive, listed on the agenda, are being presented to council for adoption.
Moved by Counselor Ebert and Counselor Bennett. Any discussion? All in favor? Against? Carried.
Reports from standing advisory, special, and ad hoc committees of council.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to announce to everybody that there is a fundraiser going on right now, an online auction to benefit the Future Art Center, to be part of the, the funds that we're raising. Two very well-known artists, Audrey and Alan Bain, who served the arts community in Cornwall for easily 40 years, and Audrey even is director of the Cornwall Regional Art Gallery when we had that institution. They have moved to be closer to family, and they left behind 75 original Canadian paintings, obviously, and recognizably Canadian, subject of many awards, and they stipulated that we, the art center, get the benefit and share that benefit with Hospice Cornwall and with Baldwin House. So, there are three great local charities who will benefit from the proceeds of the auction, and you can plug into it at bethe link.net, bethe link.net, and I'm pretty sure there's going to be a notice about that on the city site fairly soon. We're just working on the specifics of it. And on the same note, we're pushing $800,000, folks. We are at $786,093.63. Hope the auction will maybe bump us up into $800,000.
That is fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Thank you to that whole committee that is working very hard on this project. Any other reports from standing committees? Counselor Gardner?
It's just a discussion I had as the chair of the Eastern Ontario Health Unit today, where globally, there now have been a million deaths, and during a discussion with a person at the health unit, they equated that to the entire population of Ottawa dying. The population of Ottawa is a million. Globally, we've lost a million people. This is not a hoax, folks. This is real.
Thank you. Any other reports from standing committees? Madam Clerk?
There are no notices of motion, so now we are presenting a confirming bylaw for adoption.
Moved by Counselor McDonald and Counselor Bennett. All in favor? Against? Carried.
Our next meeting, Madam Mayor, will be on Tuesday, October 13th.
After Thanksgiving, so I wish you all a safe Thanksgiving. Be very careful in the next few weeks. Bon action de grâce. Motion to adjourn? Counselor Bennett and Counselor Grant, all in favor? Carried. Merci. Thank you.